Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our committee of the whole meeting this morning. It's nice to see so many people here and we appreciate you being here. I'll call this meeting to order at nine thirty. And I will confirm that all members of council are here as well as our municipal clerk. Item number two is the territorial land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge the township of Almanca is located on the Mississaugin Ashenembek territory and is the traditional territory of the Mississaugin Ashenembek. The township of Almanca respectively acknowledges that the Mississaugin nations are the collective stewards and caretakers of these waters and lands in perpetuity and that they continue to maintain this responsibility to ensure their health and integrity for generations to come. Item three is approval of the agenda that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting held on June seventeenth be approved. Can I get a mover in a second here? Moved by Deputy Mayor Stover, seconded by Councilor Booth. Any comments? All in favor? Motion is carried. Disclosure of pecuniary interest? Deputy Mayor?
Mary, I wish to declare pecuniary interest. It has to do with, again, item five point one. It also has to do with the delegation from the library board. There doesn't appear to be any information here, but out of an abundance of caution due to the litigation, that will be why I've declared it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else that has a declaration, that'll be duly noted. And moving on to number five one, which is our delegations. And this five one is a delegation by the Almanca Public Library. Request for a facility rental fee waiver. And today are going to be presented by Marcia Jones, who is the Chair of the Board, and Ken Norana. Norhowa?
Norhowa, yeah.
That's as good as I can do anyways. Okay, would you two like to come up? Make your presentation, please? And just to remind you, the presentations are ten minutes. And then there'll be five minutes for council to ask questions.
Well, thank you very much, I'm delighted to be here. So you are here. Liz Perry is here, our CEO of the library. We show them and our board member, Brad Booth, who's here as representative of council. Um, starting by Jared, the head of ownership, charging the rent. Dean to be part of the library. Uh, this came into us. Our budget had been resented. And our budget is extremely tight. No way for waivers. Our program has increased significantly. I am absolutely amazed that they just have been increasing by ourselves. There are valuable programs provided for all ages and great resources to the community who may have noticed this. For the Canada Works CRA, who others can tell, and also a presentation on nutrition this week. Of the number of library users, it's been increasing for online and in person. And consistent while is valid in the community. I want to see when people are sitting outside the raft of life accessing WiHOD because they don't have that at their home. And it's, it's so rewarding to see that they know that that's so I would pass it over to Tamara. And it's our
That's exactly the word I was gonna say too.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. As Marcia says, we were a little bit surprised by the price for a fee payment. We were the coolest when we should turn the presentation. I think the most important part here is that hasn't been approached before. It's also something to keep in mind that, as Marcia said, we run a very, very limited budget. It's not it's not expansive, it's not frivolous. The third program is that it may not follow up a daily customer. So it was a property. We could only apply to use it in if it is free, if it's somebody that books space after the book. In agreement with our CEO, we would willing to retire. The purpose of this is just to explain that our presentations, our engagement with the community is generally on a low cost basis. And that's something we're trying to emphasize. So any waiver that you can consider, especially in this current year after our budget has already been passed, wouldn't be greatly appreciated. Going forward, we're prepared to this ever had an understanding that we have drafted that we wanted to discuss and negotiate with with council, make sure that we're aligned the same way. But for this particular delegation, we're simply asking for the waiver for this five year. Okay.
Programs that have been going on in the library. Uh, the British Home Children's Association, very well. We have senior some children starting to be a guardian of the collaboration, uh, we're trying conservation authorities. Roads switching at home, presentation. A March three program, a mention on the sandbox. Mention reality sandbox. We talked about the March three, which is the beach. Being story time. They are provided by a pandemic for recovery with a medical focus. Just therapy, meditation, sound bath, nutrition, and mental health is coming. And in the fall, there's going to be mindful meditation, thoughts, art therapy. And the planning and there's a tiny arch which indicates signs of the impotency of access for by our campuses. And our asked creates that will reference to the theme of a college. So that's it.
Thank you. Do members of council have any questions or comments? Councilor Booth?
To you, your worship. Um, just a concern, I guess, and maybe Ken, you could answer this is, is it true that the library funding has had no increase from the government at all in almost the last three decades? So you're running on the same amount of money from thirty years ago?
Thank you. Great. Yes, that's true. The the budget isn't funded by the province of Ontario, it's not with that increase. We, as one of the smaller municipal libraries, our debt is roughly sixteen thousand dollars. The operating brand hasn't stayed up. This might be, I don't say. It's definitely something we want to work on, but I'm sorry, we're finding right now. Okay, thank you.
My, my, and I don't know for sure, but my thoughts on that is you're not getting penalized any more than, or not penalized, that's the wrong word, but it hasn't increased for other library boards across the province. Neither.
Oh, I would say, Mr. Grant, that's exactly, that is correct.
Yeah.
One of the things that's happened though, I think if you take a look at the urban centers versus the non-urban centers, you might think they're solid. On this, if you look at, if you look at standards like Toronto.
Yep.
Or, you know, the bigger population centers, you might find there's a slight adjustment.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor, will you?
All right, basically, our presentation was informative. I congratulate you. Since we began our term on council, there has been very significant increase in the number of new leaders and and then significant increase in the number of programs. And to walk in and see the new drift and the mental health board there as I walk in, fantastic. Those are the kinds of things that our community needs. And from my perspective as a counselor, the most cost-effective way that we can provide those things is through our library. And quite frankly, uh, might be that the library is not providing them. No one will be providing them. We do not ask the to run those programs in another part of our staff. But we need our library doing it. And my final point would be that we are in the midst of an affordability crisis. And if you look at library, it always goes up during affordability crises or times of stress because it is the only free space, public free space available with me.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Ainsworth, please go ahead.
To you, Mayor. So I have a question to give to, to, to end. You know, we've had multiple conversations about getting together with the TMOU. And to be quite honest, it's just the first time that I've seen the UTEC. That's a library in duty for a community funded at a total of like fifty, two different leagues. And probably close to about four thousand dollars in costs. I, I just think that something like this would be probably wouldn't come here today if we, if we would get together with that MOU understanding of this partnership that we talked about multiple times with the library as well as the council. Um, so I would say that it's probably time to maybe get that agreement together. I guess whether we can have a phone meeting, maybe a level of further stuff just with the library if it has to be enough. But I, you know, I'm not saying that, that the UTEC doesn't, I love the programming that's, that's running. I'm just, I'm, I guess I'm concerned that we haven't got that in agreement with the library. And I know we've definitely had a draft for it, but we haven't seen it yet. And now this is probably
Marcia wants to make a comment? Go ahead, Marcia.
He was last parade in our league and I was able to ensure the full staff by the end of the day.
Thank you for reading the point.
Thank you. Ken, do you have a comment?
Yes, the company is what I did before. There's really no better way for us to bridge this gap than through that MOU. So what we've done, and we want to be clear on this, we prepared a draft. It's not a sort of a complete, we, we anticipate being able to talk council and then work with council, make sure that we're aligned. And that we, you know, we're working for operations. So I want to be clear, the draft that's coming is, is just a general basic framework. We've done a fair bit of work on the details. But it's something that we will to work with council to put the final the final agreement against. And that's it.
Go ahead, please.
Um, I want you to remember that this MOU is not, it can't wait to be an intensive presentation. It's for us to work together. Uh, you know yourself that there are a lot of changes from council and the library board members and it provides a guide for me to work in the future.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I listened to Counselor O'Neill and, you know, her comments makes sense. In my opinion, some sense. We want to be able to provide those services when people are interested in that type of stuff. Um, I, I do know, I would like to, I think Counselor Ainsworth mentioned it and maybe I didn't catch it, but how many, about how many times would you be using that through the year?
Well, because, sorry, I did.
Fifty-two?
Um, and I'm just, that's one of them. Um, I heard that they
And that's, and that's over the three libraries I, I should do.
So I can't speak after we've been back. Beyond those states, we will just make sure we put that correctly. But I think one of the important parts is, as we said, it's about four thousand dollars. And probably those things better. That would be rather separate. Not sure. We haven't done.
Yeah.
So it's important for us and mine for the order. You can't do that.
And it's, it's my understanding that your request would be would take into consideration whether the hall is, could be rented or is being rented?
Absolutely. The, the important part of the theory is we would not take space that would generate the required funds for this phase five. We take space that we bought was, I can use. So if somebody will get here, if there's a collision of eggs or traffic on legs, then the library works a bit. And take the, the pay.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Go ahead.
Listen to questions. So are you going to get then do you think you're running into one of the library? Yeah.
Or, yeah, I think we're, we're, the events will we have tried because they are community events, they are how we're trying to build our base over.
Go ahead, Counselor O'Neill.
Um, just through you two, counselor. So when they, the International Women's Day, we had, there were nine tables that were set up. And all of them were full. And when we met for the British Home Children's Association, we used the community room, happy on the civic center. Then all we would have been better in the larger space because there were people of all ages there and now that was up there.
And I guess my, my thoughts on that, if, if, if the library board or library space is big enough, then you probably could use there, but as Mary Catherine has said, when you're getting big crowds, uh, we, we, you, you need that space.
Right. If you happen to visit the library here, you will see that there is a small space for more than ten people to meet. There is even that space in the raft of the facility. And failure is for us particularly, but it is a small adjacent space.
Yeah, but, and I think that's what I'm kind of saying. Every one of them can take, you know, five, six, seven, eight, or something like that, the three of them. But if you're having more than that, then you probably need to have something bigger. Last comment, because I'm gonna.
Definitely. Um, just, there's one thing that has to be remembered here. Under the leadership of our current CEO, the programming's changed significantly. And we are attracting a much larger audience this year. You can see that, and I have a list here, you know, just when you look at, um, you know, the meditation period, sorry, the meditation presentation, CRA presentation, British Home Children's Association, that obviously is going with these are the people who want to come in. We're seeing a bigger paper on it. So.
And you know, that is so practical. Uh, and you're hitting people out, that's good, and we encourage that, I think. So, um, we can't make a decision today because this is a committee of the whole. So we're going to receive it and then we'll have to get back to you when we have made that decision. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. So I'm going to read the resolution. And if you want to make a change to that, that's fine. And basically that would be a recommendation to council. Okay? But the fair statement is that the committee of the whole received the Almanca Library delegation for a facility rental fee waiver request for information. Can I get a mover in a second? Moved by Counselor Booth. Seconded by Counselor O'Neill, all in favor? That's carried. Is there another motion coming from the members? Well, I'm just asking if you want to make one. Go ahead.
I would like to make a recommendation. We have more recommendations. Or, I think twenty-five, and I think we're glad that it was through the memorandum of understanding.
You have a second to read that, Counselor Booth?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a mover and a second here. Does anybody have any comments? Counselor Booth?
To you, your worship. Um, I know being part of the library board and I agree with what the committee members were saying is uh, when the library board did their budget presentation, you know, we weren't, the library board wasn't informed that the town was going to start the charter. And this is they've been charged. So I guess it's, I mean, to me, I don't understand this. We're going to charge them for that, which means at budget time, they're going to have to put five thousand dollars more in their budget. And they're going to come to council, you know, next year and say, we need five thousand dollars more. And basically you're putting it in one hand and giving it to the other. So I agree with what Counselor O'Neill said. For this year, because it's not fair for the library that they didn't budget this money. I don't think it's fair that the township is going to ask them for this money. They don't have that five thousand dollars anywhere to go with that budget is very little. So I agree with your motion that this year, I think we waive the fee for this year and then through the memorandum of understanding. Or I know talking for the library board members, if the town wants to still charge them, then fine. Uh, next year at budget time, tell the library what you're going to charge them and they'll put it in the budget. And that would be fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ainsworth.
Uh, to you, Mayor, we probably need to get rid the actual, the actual time that you've spent. If they got forty, forty five people on the, and all of a sudden they heard that it's going to take a while. So we'd rather have a commitment thing to them. And that's their days. Or figure something else.
I, I, I remember the impression that they'll, if they have one, you know, I don't know how much, how advanced time they got, but my understanding is that they would, they would pass that. They move to a different date, but if possible. Uh, Counselor O'Neill.
I absolutely agree with Counselor Ainsworth's point, but if in the recommendation it was that we would extract that through the memorandum of understanding. So I think that is included already in the recommendation before.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, through your worship, just to be, just to clarify, Counselor, that is the way it is now. For example, I'll use on Saturdays here, they have ukulele class. And Chris has gone and booked it for the sixth Saturday, say, in a row or eight Saturdays. If the township all of a sudden has a request for there is a funeral here or a wedding or something like that, they just have to phone Trish and Trish will cancel the library event. And that's always given understanding that they would never take a rental away from the town. Uh, I think it's a courtesy for the library to at least go to Jeremy and say, these are the things that we're requesting, but we're always willing to move. Because the library just is not telling the town when they're using it. So it's a courtesy to tell them, we're using this for six Saturdays in a row, but we're willing to be pumped. And that's why I don't think there's ever been a situation where the library has shown up and it's from the town to show up because it's good communication between those departments.
And there's the other, uh, fact too, that they're only asking for one of the facilities. There's two more that could be open on that particular day. Which may, you may be able to work with. Any further comments? All in, all in favor of Mary Catherine's motion? That's carried. Okay. Thank you both. Uh, thank you very much for being here, both of you, as well as your team. Um, and next we've got another delegation. And, uh, this was originally to be presented by Claire Holloway. But, uh, Counselor Todd Eldridge from Port Hope is here to make a presentation. And well, as well as uh, Mr. Dean. Anthony. And Anthony works for Stallings. Oh. And I know that, but anyways, gentlemen, you have ten minutes, so please go ahead.
Well, thank you very much, those for your counsel and the members of staff for having us here today. Um, you would have received in your package is a presentation that I'll quickly take you through at a high level. Uh, first of all, just for context sake, um, I'm the co-chair of the Intermunicipal As first time house performances. I'm the co-chair of that, where I can prepare. Of course, not even here today. Um. People who may be listening. The task force will create it as a, a direction of all the lower tiers councils, uh, in Northumberland County. Uh, coming together, we're the group of councillors, I represent Port Hope. Uh, and the group of councillors. We don't have a romantic authority, but we do work on issues around. And where can we find ways to increase, I would say, reduce all of that. Um, back in February, uh, we had a workshop, uh, where we brought together stakeholders.
Identifying one of the issues around housing homelessness that exists in the lower tiers and in Northumberland County itself. The second half of that day was then spent braving those groups apart. So you had an individual from each of the state lower groups at a table talking about the solutions. And what was incredible about that experience is that when they sat in their groups and talked about the things that they saw that were the problems. Very quickly, someone at the table said, oh, I can solve that. Here's how we would do it. And so when we start getting people to come together and speak about the issues that we have in housing and homelessness across Northumberland County. Very quickly, what we ended up doing was finding a number of solutions that can be implemented at the municipal level. And across over at the county level as well. So in your package, you would have seen a set of key recommendations. So you would have received a copy of the report. That was, uh, that was created out of that with a list of recommendations. If you haven't had a chance to read it, I highly recommend you do. If time is, uh, of the essence, then I would just simply point you towards the recommendations. But in the package that you receive, there's four buckets of recommendations that came forward. I just wanted to get at a high level what these are. So one of them you'll see is increased flexibility and municipal planning. And really what that is about is. In planning. We have a term called as a right. And in as a right, it gives certain privileges and permissions to people to be able to do things on a piece of land. That's primarily geared towards, uh, single family dwellings. If you have a single family dwelling, you have the most amount of as of rights. Uh, baked in already. But if you wanted to build something that was different, if you wanted to build something that had a bit more density in apartment building. If you want to put something in that was more, uh, akin to having multiple homes on a parcel of land, those as of rights disappear. And what you find yourself is being in front of council or with a group of citizens. Who are deciding whether or not you should be able to have those rights or not. And so you can see very clearly how what happens is the people who have the as of rights. Are speaking to the people who do not have the as of rights. And without those as of rights, it can slow down the building process. Um, one of the ways in which we can tackle that is by simplifying our bylaws, making it easier so that when builders do come to town. They do have the ability to move quickly because those as of rights have already baked into the land. It's basically giving delegated authority over to planning staff who can then also move very quickly. To be able to get projects off the ground. The second bucket on here is around strengthening communication in the planning process. So, um, one thing that came through in our workshop, especially around builders and developers is. We need clear communication, uh, around, uh, how things can get built. To the community, how they can build something. They want to have additional residential, but we need to be very clear. It could become very confusing as to how you're supposed to be able to get things built because you are supposed to be able to interpret. Everything that goes on in the planning act and the, uh, building, uh, uh, bylaws. So. If we can move some of that to more simple plain language, that certainly helps. Um, and how do we get more standardized responses? One of the things that we did learn was that, and oftentimes what builders would do is. They would very much like to be able to build in multiple municipalities across Northumberland. But as you can imagine, as you move from municipality to municipality. The rules change slightly and so you have to start all over again. Even if you were to build the exact same style home. On the identical piece of land, but you happen to have switched over to another municipality, you're starting all over again and you're not even sure what you're up against. Which leads into, um, some of the standardization. So explore opportunities for countywide standardization. I would note that some of this is happening at county council where they have been talking about how do we standardize certain things. And some of those may show up as shared services and some of those may show up as shared standards. And that's not to take away from the identity from a lower tier. Every lower tier wants to have its own identity about how it builds and what it looks like. But to be able to identify what are the shared standards would certainly make it easier and faster to get homes built. But it also unlocks the ability for builders to say, listen, I would happily have four or five different projects going across. Uh, multiple municipalities instead of having to do one in one municipality, wait to another one in a municipality and another one. It really would be able to speed things up because there is a certain understanding of how they can go about doing that. And then the last one is streamline the process for repeat development. Again, this is about. How can we give pre-approval on the same design? So if someone was coming to a municipality and they have a design. Especially in light of the fact that modular housing, uh, has a spotlight on it right now. There's a great deal of funding. There's an opportunity to have model A, model B, model C. And so municipalities have the opportunity to be able to say, based on those models, we know what we're going to get. So why don't we just go ahead and give pre-approval on if you're going to build one of those and you're not coloring outside the lines. Then we can get them on to properties very quickly. Um, if we had a menu, uh, pre-approved designs per se, uh, per se, then we would be able to. Um, get some of those, uh, properties moving very quickly. Um. As far as next steps. Um, you'll see that we've got two things in here. One is around sequencing priorities and the other is around determining responsibility. I want to speak a little bit towards the sequencing of priorities first. You'll notice that we don't talk about just setting priorities. Cause we actually see all of these as important. There's a sequence though, in which we want to be able to go. There is some, you know, quote unquote, low hanging fruit. What are the things that we can do very quickly, but also what are the small moves that each lower tier can take? That will have high impact right away. Um, we also want to make sure that we recognize that every municipality has already been working on some of this. It's not lost on us that some people are, uh, maybe further ahead, some are further behind, some are in between. But what's important about the recommendations that came out of the report is to meet each municipality where they are. And build on to the existing work that staff has already done so that we can start moving, um, each municipality ahead. Recognizing that everyone's got limited capacity. So match that capacity and see what we can do as far as moving things forward. And the other one is determining responsibility. There's obviously lots of opportunity for responsibility with what does county council take and county staff? Um, what does each of the lower tiers take and based on the capacity of their staff? Um. Recognizing that we're all in the middle of, uh, official planning, uh, right now. Um, one of the great opportunities that we have available to us is to look at these recommendations. Through the lens as you're going into your OP. How many of these things can get baked into the OP as you're going forward? The work has been done, the recommendation's been done, it's simply a matter of lifting it. And applying it to where it makes sense for you. And then of course the task force, you know, having the endorsement of each council, uh, to continue this good work and bring forward more recommendations. Uh, is certainly, uh, very helpful. And what I'd like to do now is I'd like to pass the, uh, the mic over to, uh, Anthony and, uh. Uh, from a builder's point of view, cause he joined us, uh, if you'd like to share a few.
Just, just, we're at ten minutes, so I'm going to have to get approval from council to continue on this conversation. Move by councillor Ruth. Second by councillor Ainsworth. Please go ahead, Anthony.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to members of the committee. Good morning. My name is Anthony Do and, uh. Mayor Logan, I'm now a partner installed with him, so that's exciting since the last time we've seen one another. Uh, but it gives me the opportunity to speak from a position of full authority. Um, and for the new members of council that I have not yet met or addressed at council meetings. Um, those of you that don't know us, uh, to introduce ourselves, we are a very progressive, uh, builder. Locally based family organization. And I have had the opportunity to meet with the mayor and his worship before and talk about affordable housing and. Really at the root of it all, from a builder's perspective, our local builders in Northumberland County know the answers. And, and where we're, we're devoted and focused and it's through the individual councils that we'll get there. It's about putting more doors into the community. In other words, housing affordability. Is being spoken to that we need more doors. We need more places for people to make their own. We have a housing shortage in Northumberland County. As worship and I reviewed a piece of work that was hosted or, uh, written by the lady that hosted our meeting, Monica Turner. And it was funded by the United Way for Habitat four or five years ago. It showed us in a deficit of about six thousand rental units in Northumberland County alone. That's affecting our affordability at the entry level market. We can't find affordability when. What were at very inexpensive rentals twenty years ago are now being hit at market in Coburgs. Um, uh, multi-unit, so the two-bedroom rentals are greater than a GTA rental at this stage. Um, those of you that drive in and out of Coburg have seen, uh, a series of buildings that I built last year at the east end of town. There's a yellow, a green, a gray, uh, and a light blue one. Uh, they hold eight units per. And I put them up and within thirty days they were rented out. Um, it's, it's kind of an example of where we're going as a industry and where I'm going as a company. To continue to build rentals within the community. And I think as we, I can't solve the housing crisis and none of us think that we can. But the work that was done at that meeting said we need to come together and the end result that we've really honed in on is that. Luckily, we're in this kind of community where we know the members of authority. And so we're hoping to see that municipal government will partner with nonprofits. Who will partner with private enterprise. And that is really the takeaway that we're going to look at. And whether it be the council. Find that they support their planning staff to allow more accessory dwelling units within this, this area. We're not going to see a high-rise built in Grafton in the, in the near term. But we may find that planning staff recommend that as they evolve their OP. That they support the notion of more units as a right on a property that is fifty acres that could have. A small multi-residential because we have the room. I grew up on a farm, grew up on a farm. You have dead water, you have to have sewage treatment. But a small four-plex residential unit on some form of a larger property would sustain that without damage to anything. You could have four rentals on a farming community to house. My, or, uh, occasional workers, seasonal workers, those sorts of things are half forward where we're using our land wisely. And from my perspective, from that of the building community, I think the biggest shocker has been, there's a fair bit of gray. Uh, only forty, but joking, uh, but along the way, we've seen the value of our land. Around here, when I started, there was residential lots throughout all McCollum and Hamilton Township for ten grand, fifteen thousand. That same piece of property is three to four hundred thousand, half a million dollars. It boggles our mind. We've always said, we know people from the GTA will find the beauty of Northumberland County, move here, they're moving here and it's driven our prices up. It's about conserving our land within the hamlets so that we don't tear apart our good farmland. I've always been a passionate believer on that. Do some gentle intensification within the urban boundaries will help us. Make it affordable for those who are working here, should be able to afford to live in our communities. So I think that's been where the building and the private sector has come forward. And it's been a pleasure to work with these folks that have been part of the committee. Um, and I think at the end of the day, we look forward to working with councils to find a path forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Does council members have any questions? Well, go ahead deputy mayor.
To you, Mayor Logan. Um, just a couple if I may. To Anthony, you mentioned the, the rentals that at the east end. Are they affordable rentals?
Thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor, and through his worship to you. Um, they, since I constructed them, they now fall, depends on whose definition of affordable we're word at. Um, in the strictest sense, locally, they actually tick the attainable. I, as a private entity, I have to make them cash flow to satisfy my financial institution. But over the course from the initial planning to now market, they tick the box of attainable. But how I look at it is those attainable units have allowed people to move into, say, a newer unit and they freed up units. Below them that are more in the affordable. We did not receive any subsidies for them. Um, Coburg did not have any, any room in their CIP to support us. So they were done as per a regular, uh, building and development fee process. So, uh, sadly, we couldn't make them work for an affordable market. But they did, uh, hit the attainable number. So they are, uh, they are over ten percent below market in Coburg.
Thank you. Mayor Logan, just one more. And, uh. The last couple of Fridays I have been in the hamlet. The traffic has been unbelievable. I almost need to get across and guard to get me across the road. And so when I'm listening to, uh. This task force wanting to do intensification on these properties. That increases. Um, the amount of people that will be living here. And right now we're, we're. I think on the cusp was of a huge change here in the municipality. So I'm wondering if this task force has looked at, are you only dealing with, um, the housing part of it? And/or are you also looking at the required infrastructure needed? Because a lot of homes were on at least an acre, that's what you needed here. And so if you're talking about putting two or three or four houses on a property. Then that's going to increase, which is nice, but what has been taken into account as far as. What the infrastructure is going to be needed at. Good.
Thank you for the question and through his worship to you, deputy mayor. I think based on experiences that we've had with some of our member municipalities. Infrastructure is a crucial element of this for any municipality. And as we go through periods of growth. I think the example is probably in Coburg and in Brighton. Uh, and I'm going to reference Brighton specifically. Brighton had a wastewater crisis over the last five years. And needed a huge injection of support from the minister, from the provincial government. To upgrade their wastewater. Their initial request of the province didn't show any growth. And the province denied them any funding. The, uh, CAO came back, the new CAO came back and reviewed the whole thing. And upped her ass to the province to the tune of almost fifty percent more money. But showed how it would help the community grow and they got thirty-eight million.
Oh.
So they turned them down at twenty-two. They went back and said, we can add twenty-five hundred homes. And I'm, I'm using Cal Oi numbers here, so please forgive me. Born and raised on Northumberland, just so you know. But. That was the element. Province, I think, is willing to support municipalities that turn around and show that. They need support in infrastructure to grow, but however, part of that growth will utilize their hamlets. Keep the intensification within the boundary and cognizant of the fact that some of the best farmland in Canada is here in southern Ontario. So hold our growth, but we cannot constantly sustain one and a half acre residential developments. They're lovely. But they aren't affordable. And, and so I think there is an opportunity here to collaborate and look and say. We could do a nice semi-detached project or a nice semi-detached fargo. In Grafton on an acre lot, I'll put two homes on. And it will still fulfill everyone's requirement, it's just different and it's new and. We aren't good at change in this industry, but we see the reality come. Um, and I hope that didn't take you too long, because councillor.
I was just going to give a part B to that by, uh, by mayor, which is, um. As far as the scope of the, the task force and whether or not we're taking that in. So we are a group of elected officials. So what we are doing is partnering with the expertise of the planning staff and works of engineering staff. Because they'll know those, uh, details, uh, uh, we would, um, and of course the builders are, are much more, uh, well versed in.
What did you have going?
Yeah. Yeah, through you, Mayor. So, um. This is all great information and I, and I agree with a lot of it. And, um. You know, along the lines of, you know, we've got the new bill five, new bill seventeen coming down, they've got regulation. Uh, forty-one twenty-four for the conservation acts and stuff and all this is in, and, and, um, regulation, uh. The twenty-three also. And all of it is trying to cut red tape to make housing happen. So the task force and all those other changes that are coming through is right up the hill. Now, my question here is. This is a big project. For any staff to take on. And, and I'm not so sure that we should put a date on them. And I would ask our staff. You know, what is the timelines? You know, what have we got already going on and how much time is this going to take to get off the, uh. Get off and going. So, um. That would be my only concern because I think if you're going to jump into this and it's, it's just multiple levels. You know, planners, province. And it's just, it's, it's ongoing. So that would be my question is, uh, because we know how busy our staff is. How much of this going to?
That's, that's a good point. And, um. Our, 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 our staff are busy looking after the stuff that we've done historically and to look at big projects like that. You know, that, that would be a challenge. But at the same time, EDUs and that type of stuff are, are achievable. And I think that can, that could help a lot too. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, thank you, I was mayor and, uh, uh, through you, um. You, you'll see in the facts that we gave you that, uh, we've asked for a motion to be put forward and we've given you a motion to, for consideration. More than just accept this for information. And some of it speaks exactly to that. It's meant to be done in the flow, in the flow of what you're already doing. So. There are three, you know, I, I won't take you through the wherewithal as someone from here, so I don't know what they all are. But, uh, the highlights of, of that motion that we would actually consider is really take the simplest next step. Which is to give direction to planning staff and to the CAO to join a municipal or countywide, uh, meeting. Uh, where we will have another conversation around what are the things that are already going on in municipalities. So that we can get a better idea of what the scope is of this work. Uh, the second part of this is really to use it as a lens when you are already considering OP because you have to go through OP anyway. So just take these recommendations and use them as you're looking at it and weave them in where it makes sense. So no extra work there, it's simply part of the, the, the work anyways. And then the third part of that, uh, motion that we're asking for is, is really just to provide continued support to the task force. So that we can keep doing this work and keep communicating it, uh, out, um, so that the work goes forward. So I totally appreciate. Our staff and Port Hope would say the same thing, like we're, we're underwired, we're overcapacity. Uh, the idea of extra work or anything else. Um, is, is outside of, of what we have available. That's why we, when we made this ask is. If we're going to be doing the OP anyways, simply just have the conversations and layer the recommendations in. If we can get the, uh, you know, the planning, uh, leaders and CAO to the table to have another conversation with. The, with their peers across the county, they can come up with more of those kinds of solutions on how they can do it. So the idea is not put a big burden.
I think, I think Mary Catherine advised us that there's another meeting coming. I don't know if the date was finally decided or not, but.
Okay, well, I'm jumping ahead of poor Todd here because I was coming back with that on Thursday, but. But um, one of the things at our last meeting, which is what you're referencing, was that we developed a subcommittee to look at communal services, which goes back to your comment about infrastructure. And so we are planning an information session. And in fact, yesterday, we were able to confirm the date, which is September twenty-fifth. But that is different than this one. And if I could, Mayor Lobo, to address your question, Mike, I know there's a date and that looks really tight in there. That isn't for completion of this, that's to get the feedback, so that we are ready for the information to the official plans. So um, there will be a joint meeting, which there are periodically joint meetings between um, the intermunicipal departments. So this one would be planning and CAOs having an intermunicipal meeting and then um, giving us some recommendations of what is the most peaceful in their community. And by working together and working jointly, and I know that uh, Tracy did talk that there's already some work being done in terms of the collaboration on communication platform within that. So I think that's still at the early stages, but that was definitely something we heard loud and clear. And certainly when I've gone out to the community and said, you know, people that I know are willing to read this kind of thing and they read it. And one of their big recommendations was, I can't remember which one of you who said it, but the idea that there's going to be these off-the-shelf options that are going to be quick, fast, you've got your checkmark versus a complex, one-only, unique house, which might take more time and planning.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Everybody else have any questions? And then we'll debate, because we need to, go ahead.
Just through your worship, thank you, gentlemen, for a very informative uh, presentation on the the housing solutions, especially from the builder's point of view, which is nice to hear that somebody that boots are on the ground to say what is possible. So thank you very much.
Gentlemen, it's been our pleasure. So thank you very much. Uh, you know, we are considering it and uh, just as one quick comment and then I'll. There was a report coming from the county planners the other day and they've changed it where they used to not have any real standards or goals. But now they've got goals for how long it will take to, to get uh, uh, a subdivision going or or even a consent application and adding, adding up. So I think that's setting us up for good, good things for everybody. Well, thank you both very much for taking your time. And we'll say, and stay saving. Okay, Council, uh, I'll read the resolution and then we'll, we'll debate as necessary. Uh, the recommendations from the uh, presentation is recommended the committee of the whole receive the Northumberland Housing Solution Workshop recommendations presentation for information. And the presentation included, it was recommended that the committee of the whole recommend to council that council direct senior planning staff and the chief administrative officer to participate in a Northumberland County Housing Implementation Strategy Session to review the document and provide written feedback to the task force no later than October first, two thousand and twenty-five. Specifically identifying actions to be taken at the municipal and intermunicipal level that address the identified challenges within this report. And number two, actions that align with any initiatives already in progress at the municipal or intermunicipal level. And thirdly, that specific zoning bylaws and official plan amendments that could be implemented that increase flexibility and excel housing development and that the counting direct staff to consider the recommendations from the Northumberland Housing Solution Workshop, the summary and recommendations reported and the action items from the Northumberland County Housing Implementa- Implementation Strategy Session in the ongoing official plan review process. With particular attention to increasing flexibility in municipal planning, streamlining processes for repeat development and strengthening communications and planning processes. And that the mayor sent a letter on behalf of council to the intermunicipal task force or housing, on housing and homelessness, expressing support for their collaborative approach and commitment to addressing the housing crisis in Northumberland County. Can I get a move in a second? Moved by Counselor Booth, seconded by Counselor Ainsworth. Is there any discussion? Counselor O'Neil.
Um, I hesitate to say this, because I already, you know, it's quite a mouthful for you to read that, but there was a page before that, which is page thirty-eight in our agenda package, the wheras statements, giving the background for it's not on our agenda package, but when it comes back uh, to council for approval. Uh, my, I think it would be wise to include the wheras statements.
Uh, okay, how many are there?
Hmm, what page did you say?
Thirty.
There's only twenty-eight pages in there.
Sorry, page thirty-eight of the agenda package, Joe, and there's seven of them there.
Okay. That, that would make sense. That we, that we can shift that, I think. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Ainsworth.
Uh, to you, Mayor. I, I think this whole thing, um, you know, we as a council and staff need to sit down and just kind of go over ourselves and, and, and um, you know, digest it all and come up with the, you know, maybe our add-ons to it or, or takeaways from it. And before we commit ourselves to something that we can't actually do. So I, I think it's important that um, if, if we had time to actually do that in a, in a meeting or in an extra meeting set aside. Uh, I think it is very important.
Yeah, I think staff have to start it. And they'll present to us and they will make decisions based on what we know.
Yeah.
And, and uh, feedback from, from when we're getting it from staff.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of stuff there and I know it's their words, but we got to be able to commit to it if we're going to say yes. So we should look at it all.
Agreed. Further comments? Go ahead, Counselor Cruz, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, just through you, Mayor Lobo. One of the things that comes out loud and clear is the simplification of the whole process. If that, if that is one of the major things that happens, I think that's going to be great. I totally agree with Counselor Ainsworth. To have a discussion with our planning staff and building department to see where we sit in through all this and that information would be very helpful as well. Look forward to it coming through. Thank you.
Are you sure you have any other staff to do that?
Thank you.
Further comments? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Just clarify, did we just approve that that would come forward with the wheras statements or do we need to then?
Yeah, we'll put them, we'll, we'll.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
For the next one.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Going on to committee reports. Uh, and we have five, six of them, six, five of us. And so the recommendation is that the agenda items, six-two to six-six, on the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five committee of the whole meeting agenda, we received their information. We'll receive them and if you want to talk about any one of them, then we'll, we'll come back to it. So can I get a move in a second to receive them all? Moved by Counselor Ainsworth, seconded by Counselor Neil, all in favor? That's carried. Okay. Anybody want anything more on the library? Deputy Mayor.
To you, Mayor Lobo. In reading uh, the minutes of the April fourteenth, and this is more procedural. They appear to be uh, accepting a report that doesn't exist. So there's nothing to report, but they make a motion to receive it. So I mean, I'm really not sure if, if that's just added alert for them. Uh, uh, that was one question. There um, it was interesting as I sat the backseat to um, see that the MOU should be appearing today. That will help answer a lot of questions.
Yep.
For twenty-twenty-four, there's five sets of minutes that still need to appear. There also is a difficulty when they go into a closed meeting. They go into it, but they don't come out. Or they come out of it a minute before they went into it. Just needs to be more uh, to follow the rules with the Public Libraries Act on how one goes in. Because that's very important. If they were ever to get audited, it would be really difficult for them to come ahead. I'm not sure, um, I could ask the question to Madam Clerk. How can we get the information uh, for those missing five sets of minutes to come here? As well, give them direction on proper documentation for closed meetings.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I can reach out to the library board, so I'll get the dates from you that are missing and ask that those minutes be forwarded. And I can bring them on to uh, the next committee of the whole agenda. So that's, that's an easy one. Easy request to, to work with the library board on. In terms of matter of procedure, so they are a standalone board, they're a third-party independent board. Uh, so we don't have any jurisdiction. It's not like one of our committee members, uh, uh, sorry, committees of council whereby we would have a little bit more oversight, because they play by the same procedural bylaw our advisory committees do. The Public Library Board is subject again to its own uh, Public Libraries Act. Therefore, they have their own procedural bylaws, so that would be up to them to enforce it. Um, so, but as always, you know, we are here to uh, provide support and to work with any of our boards and committees if they have any questions on how to uh, do anything in terms of matter of procedure. So you know, I'm, I'm here as a resource and as a colleague, um, if there's any questions or if they have any concerns that they want to uh, to run by and not those of our, you know, any of our municipalities, we work very closely with um, any of our neighboring municipalities. As clerks, we, we're there to support one another in matters of procedure. So we're we're, we're here as a resource, should you think.
Thank you. The only other comment I would have, just briefly. Uh, we're in the middle of twenty-twenty-five, so it would be nice for us. And as a matter of transparency, that we receive this information. And I thank you for uh, reaching out to the library board. Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, we're going to move on to lower trend. Few comments in the lower trend. Counselor Booth.
Uh, through you, your worship, maybe just to Mike about the lower trend. Mike, could you explain a little bit about in the minutes of the final minutes of April ten? It talks about a surplus uh, allocation and it says that they had a surplus from last year. And they're spending approximately almost a hundred thousand dollars on this stuff. Can you tell us what the surplus was? And I'm just concerned, because I see that they, they keep asking for more money and it's high and everything. And then I see there's a hundred thousand dollars left over from last year that they're spending on, on other things.
Through you, Mayor. If I could ask Counselor Booth, I would uh, I'll get that information and bring it back in. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other further comments? Go ahead, Counselor Neil.
Um, just a comment and a question. The comment is, I'm quite impressed with one of their uh, education events they did. Overall, their education events are more than we've seen in the past. But the one where they did the tri-county children's water festival and had nine hundred and twenty-seven students from all four school boards. That must have been quite an event managing nine hundred and twenty-seven students. But good on them. It is an important um, and with uh, the climate crisis happening, an increasingly important event. And then my question through you to Counselor Ainsworth, is there anything within uh, their annual report that you would like to draw particular attention to counsel to?
Uh, to you, Mayor. No, I don't think so. I think um, you know, they're busy with everything as well as we are. They're short-staffed. And uh, some of them wear multiple hats down there. And um, they're feeling, you know, the, the changes with the regulations and stuff that as much as anybody else are. Maybe it's harder on them than it is us, but uh, um, you know, we got a, a good board, we got a good group of staff down there and they are definitely trying to work with us. And they're trying to find ways to make things easier also, comes to uh, building and permits and stuff.
Thank you. Um.
And, and I might also say, I might, that this presentation today fits right in with them, because they're also concerned about the multiple different um, uh, planning aspect of, of uh, developments or, or building lots and stuff that they have to deal with from municipality to municipality. So standardization would be, is, is right up their alley.
Go ahead.
Just moving on to another, I would just like to mention six point six.
Okay.
Not sure if everyone's finished with the lower trend. I'd just like to mention, um, and this would be, Mayor Lobo, over to um, uh, Counselor O'Neil, what uh, does R O M P stand for? Sorry, I'm right up at the front there.
Um, I can tell you what they do. Is that helpful?
Well, I, that, that's fine. I should have.
They're university students that are in the process of becoming doctors and they need to do placements within the hospitals. And so while they, the hospital coordinates sort of their day activities, who, what doctors they're with. Um, our, the physician recruitment board in, has provided some of the evening uh, activities. Which brings up one of the key things about, that we have to keep in mind with physician recruitment is these are relationships that the recruiter needs to build over many years. It isn't something that just happens and it takes, you put out the job posting and ta-da, you get a doctor. No, this is a long-term process. But there has been some very good um, results come from the raw students. So Queens has been the primary one in the past, but they now have a new program out of Lake Bridge. And we're getting even more students coming through that program. So those things, while they're taking a long time to process through, we are anticipating that that's going to be a way to get physicians here, because they're reporting that they're very happy with their places here.
Mayor Lobo, just one other um, quick comment. And uh, as I, as I'm reading uh, the minutes here, it comes really right up front. I'd just like to commend uh, Ms. Cole for the multiple hat that she's wearing. It appears a lot of people are wearing a lot of different hats, but I'm looking at um, presenting a draft budget, uh, joint agreements, uh, sitting on the HR recruitment and fundraising and the marketing and helping to set up meetings. So I'd really like to commend uh, for, for all her hard work on this uh, committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, through you, Mayor, yes. Also with the uh, the dominant physician recruitment thing. And I, I, I would like to see this group also add to their, to their agenda. Um, you know, natural ways to, for healing, like, I'm, I mean, you, you look at like a natural path, absolutely. Add, add them to the list. You know, because people are starting to get away from medication, because medication is a vicious circle of of you take this medication, you get all these side effects, they give you another medication, but you know, on and on and on. So it's time that people start understanding and, and even the people looking for physicians and doctors start understanding the natural remedies that will, that have no side effect, that will cure a lot of stuff. So I would like to see, you know, if, if um, if uh, uh, that group could add that to their agenda.
That would be up to uh, actually be up to the board, I guess, after it comes through all the council, councils. Because they are a function of several different councils. Your judgment?
Um, twofold. Uh, one, as we're looking at the new primary li- plans, the um, primary homes, I think they're called. Those are the types of things where they're bringing together all different types of care into one facility. And that was that Health for All book that's um, sort of a backdrop to what the province has said we're moving towards. And I'll remind, oh, and it ties in by the way with the nutrition and mental health thing that's happening here. So how we can eat ourselves to be healthier, which is always good. And um, the last is a reminder to you that this board will be dissolving as we move to a coordinated um, process that involves Brighton, French Hills, the hospitals and our board. So there will be an amalgamation happening later this year. Oh. And if I could, just to uh add to what you said, uh Deputy Mayor Stover. Uh, Britt has stepped up to be the communications coordinator, so that's why she's sitting on each of the subcommittees because she's the person creating the notes for each subcommittee.
Was one thing I didn't mention, but yeah.
Clerk has asked me to point out something. Is that in your court?
Uh, sorry, three, Mr. Mayor, just to weigh in on the dissolution of the uh Western Florida Physician Recruitment Board. Uh, so that is a joint municipal services board that was created by, it's a legally binding agreement amongst the municipalities. So that is something that, with the news that has come forward in the last week or so, that the board is looking to dissolve, that the uh five municipal clerks affiliated with that agreement have been trying, trying to set up a meeting to discuss further because that is a legal um document and a legal standalone board that will require the council's authorities and council's decisions. Uh, so that will be coming to council as we get more information on the process. So very similar to the on the municipal annual services board, um dissolved several years ago, it's a D V C process to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Cooper. Uh, I, I've got one comment and that's to do with Northumberland uh Hope and O P P. And that is to let everyone know that um we have a new uh detachment commander. He's an acting act, actually acting O P P detachment commander, and that, his name is Mike Kavanaugh. He's coming from Peterborough. And um was that the previous one? You know, uh, the detachment commander?
Christie.
Christie, Christie, yeah, Christie is moving to Trenton. Trenton. This is the obvious. Just to let everybody, Christie is not, yes. Okay, um I'm going to suggest that we take a ten-minute break. So if I can get a moment, second to do that, move by Councilor Anthonyworth, second to by Councilor Booth, all in favor? Motion's carried, so we'll be back in the next turn. We'll be back in the five, five minutes, eleven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Five, please.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is, uh, development service reports and the first one is the contract for services, the permit management solution. And we've got a presentation by Don Butler who's going to tell us and take us through this real quickly. If you can, go ahead, Don.
Good morning, thank you to the mayor and to members of council. We, we spoke and I know council spoke at some earlier sessions this year about the need for the billing department to upgrade our building permit software program and to include that with that a public portal. So the public can make submissions online. Um, during this budget process, council approved the B E R twenty twenty five building two for a budget line of forty two thousand dollars for some new software. Uh, what I did is I followed the required procedural steps of our line one oh eight twenty twenty three for procurement business services. An open invitation was, uh, are posted on the town website as well as bedingo dot com for, uh, uh, getting out to those in the electronic world. What we found was the R F P closed on May the twenty ninth and we received two submissions that were submitted on time to the township. Um, I will note that during the open period, we reside, we did receive a third communication from one of the parties who, uh, expressed at that time, they would not be providing us a bid based on their not able to meet our budget process. Um, there were no electronic submissions, everything was hard copy. Uh, we did, uh, have a two person team consisting of myself, uh, the building C B O and the municipal clerk. We did a scoring of the two and as you can see the report here of the two submissions. Uh, one company scored a relatively high score, nine five point nine, four hundred. Well, the second company which, uh, did the score quite a bit lower, fifty nine point seven. Based on the scoring of the packages submitted, the proposal from P S D, which is Public Service Digest, Citywide had received the highest overall score. Financially, the improved budget for this work was set at forty two thousand dollars. Proposal by K S D Citywide has a total software license and information implementation cost of forty two thousand dollars and a hundred twenty five. Plus the additional version protection and maintenance cost of ten thousand nine hundred annually. For a full implementation cost of fifty three thousand twenty five dollars for the first year, then protection being cost going forward, ten thousand nine hundred annually. Um, just to give us an idea and they did provide references. These, uh, P S D city lines are providing this exact software to four other townships, three of them in Northumberland, uh, with Port Hope, Crammy and Trent Hills. Their budget price, this is always based on population base. So for example, well, Port Hope holds a population of sixteen thousand five hundred, their contract services are for sixty five thousand. Respectively, well, Crammy was a population approximately thousand less than we do of six and five hundred. Their contract base is forty, forty thousand dollars, forty one thousand. So with us having a population of seventy five hundred and coming in at forty two thousand dollars change is right along with all the other ones. Um, I'd also like to know at this time during this, while we did set aside a budget forty two, the billing jar, billing department will be asking for an additional eleven thousand to be drawn from the working capital fund billing reserve to cover this unbudgeted amount. I would also like to point out this time, I'm just going to complete in a mid-year review of the building department's budget. And I can anticipate going forward this year with some significant savings. Um, the items that will not be, be required to be used, which will help offset that additional money. Um, the important thing here to realize is, like I said, the other municipalities have been using this uh, and have got great support and great feedback from the public. Reviews from neighboring municipalities have identified savings from the streamlined application processes and the convenience of a public portal allowing customers to submit their applications and documents directly online. There is no, the new software solution does not come with, does not come with upfront. It is noted that while a new software solution does not come with upfront implementation costs, the benefits of efficient permit management, well, difficult to quantify, will prove to provide savings through efficiencies, reductions in documentation and the safe electronic storage of information. We know that right now the storage is a big issue for the building department as you welcome the town halls busting up the scenes. So it is rec, it is, it is my recommendation that council approve this recommendation moving forward at the next scheduled council meeting and then the contract being awarded to P S D Citywide. Also just to add there, this passed, uh, in the second quarter of this year with our addition of the new building administrative assistant in the building department. Um, but my building administrative assistant is quite versatile, citywide and the building of the platform. And she has done this in, uh, previous municipalities and we're excited to get started. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Members of council, any questions? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Noble, to our building official. When I'm looking at these two submissions here, I'm looking, I always said, I took my glasses off because I was wondering where all the zeros were coming from. And then it carries over. The, were they, were they talking something different here or what, what would be? I, I really don't know what would be the difference.
Thank you, through the mayor, to deputy mayor. Um, yes, when this, when the packages arrived, uh, I too, had to take a double look, put my glasses on. During the open period, we give the opportunity for the proponents to submit questions. And we provide answers, which will all publicly post on the website, which we're done. Um, P S D Citywide submitted one question session of three questions. And they're pretty general, basic kind of questions to meet the, our demands and what we're looking for. The second proponent here, Sis Gem, which, um, I am not aware of this company. They submitted, uh, the last day of questioning, a sheet of thirty five questions. It appeared to be, from my understanding, that they may be trying to more build us a personal software program. Um, I did find out that, uh, Sis Gem is a company that appears to be providing a permanent service for the city of Brampton. Now again, in City of Brampton, we're talking millions of people. So I don't, I don't really think they had a good understanding of our community. Um, again, I know they're citywide, they're city view, there's cloud permits, there's Amanda software. I have never heard these people before. Um, this is one of the companies that came through the Dingle websites. Um, it was pretty easy to score them based on the information provided. Uh, as the one proponent followed our, our outline of our requirements to T. The other proponents, uh, there was the higher price seemed really hitting this quite a bit.
Right. Um, Mayor Noble, just a comment, uh, to Don. This is just great. It's a win-win. Your staff are well-versed in it. It's going to be significant improvement in helping everybody get their job done. So congratulations on bringing it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Rainsworth.
To you, Mayor. Um, I just wondered, Don, if, is there any way you give us a short version of like a before and after? When it comes to how you fill up the, the permits and how, uh, you do your checks and everything with that program versus what we're doing now?
Major, the mayor's counsel. Um, so right now we're, we're doing it manually. We're, we're creating files manually, we're, uh, filling out the forms manually, we're storing manually. We are, um, we are scanning documents and drawings. We don't really have a huge location to store them. Drawings take up a lot of memory, um, what the, and customers have to come to town hall. They must come into our, our office and route to make their submissions. Post or after this type of technology is put in place. First, the biggest thing is customers, contractors, builders, they'll be able to submit their applications and make payment right from their office. They won't have to come to town hall. And with that electronic submission, it's automatically numbered. It's automatically timestamped, date stamped, and the storage capabilities with citywide are added because it's in the cloud. Um, it'll be also providing the public the ability to see whereabouts their application is in the stream. So they'll know, for example, is it still with planning? Because there's a box for planning. Planning, we're using this at the moment, but there is, uh, uh, an ability for them down the road. It also lets them know when the building code is being, building code review has commenced and how long that takes. So instead of the public having to call the office every ten days, where's my application? Those that are a little bit tech-heavy will be able to see right on the screen what stage your application is at. Automatic notifications go out to them. So it takes away a lot of the, I'm not gonna say the personal aspect, but it takes away a lot of the time that's taken by making a phone call or an email inquiry because they'll be able to follow up quite long.
Wow, that's good. Good. Any other questions? Go, go ahead, your Catherine.
Um, that's my question, just kind of follows up on where you were with that discussion. Um, how does this coordinate with the existing software that I know the last council near the end of their term got? And briefly touched on that it coordinated with planning, but in general, how does it coordinate with other software?
Currently, the software we're using is called MyLisa, uh, land information. Um, it, it won't, it won't integrate with it. It's completely separate. One of the things that we'll be able to do, they will be able to migrate over the last two years of information to us. So we'll be able to access that information in the new software. Uh, we will then be able to, um, eliminate the need to continue, uh, a payment program with MyLisa or Meremark. We will be, we won't need them anymore. Um, many other townships will find what will happen is for that first year of implementation and live feed goes, we'll keep Meremark up and operating for one more term and then that'll be it. We won't need them.
Any other questions? Um, just, just one, uh, that I have, the ten thousand nine hundred dollar maintenance fee. Is that included in the fifty three thousand dollars for the first year?
Yes, it is.
Good. And do, were you expecting a, uh, maintenance fee?
I, uh, through the, I do know that there are annual, uh, software license, maintenance, protection and version fees and they will be yearly. I, at the time, was gathering some money for information budget purposes. I didn't know they'd be putting the first year upfront. I thought it might be in the backend. It comes upfront. I, nothing I could do about that.
Okay, good. I'll read the resolution. Uh, it is recommended the committee of the whole receive report V L D two oh two five oh three contract for services, permit, application and inspection, management, software solutions for information. And that the committee of the whole recommend to council, the council authorized the mayor and the clerk to award R F P number two, two oh two five contract for permit management software solutions to P S D Citywide for the amount of fifty three thousand dollars plus H S T with an annual version protection and maintenance fee of ten thousand nine hundred. The council authorized expenditure of eleven thousand oh two five from the working capital fund building reserve to be applied towards the procurement of P S D Citywide. And, and just so I understand, you're going to be able to, you're thinking you'll be able to move a little bit around in, in your, uh, budget? And that actually will not kept to come out? Is that correct or?
I, like I said yesterday, doing some review, I, I can see some savings we're going to have this year.
Okay.
Some lines that may not be needed. Um, I can't guarantee, but I, I can see where there are definitely, I went there yesterday, I, I definitely have some lines where I'm going to see some savings.
Okay, good. Um, and that a bylaw be brought forward to council consideration to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign and execution, execute a purchase agreement with P S D Citywide for the supply and implementation of the permit application and inspection management software. Move her in a second. Moved by council Ruth, seconded by council Rainsworth for the discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
How, how long will it take to come? Is it off the shelf or, you know?
Uh, it comes off the shelf, however, then, then we have to personalize it for the township. Takes approximately, they have a very good working plan here. Um, probably three to four months before we'll be able to go live. My anticipation is, because I've done this before, it's always easiest to start this going live on the January one day. Is that why it keeps the miracle in order? It won't, it won't be able just to pick up and jump off where we're at this year. But they'll give us the next three, four, five months, get the contract in place, get the bill in place. We have a test environment to work with to get work on the cake so it's over radio January first.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next, we, protective service reports and this is coming from our C A O slash fire chief. And the first one for this presentation is going to be the fire department master fire plan update. Morning, Dave.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, thank you to you, Mayor. Uh, bringing this report to you as an update from the fire department with respect to the master fire plan. As you know, the township made a significant investment in the community risk assessment in the master fire plan in two thousand and twenty four. And this is a report to council to let you know how we are making out. Typically, a master fire plan is a ten-year document. And it does give us a nice roadmap to follow and achievements with respect to the fire department for the township.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions? Your Catherine, please go ahead.
More so a comment. Um, I'm very impressed by how this is formatted. As a counselor, when I'm reading this, I know exactly where we are, what's been proved, what's going to impact budget, what our timeframes are. I love the color-coded boxes that show our progress. So my question that followed from this is, could we see this from some other departments as well to format? And I'll pick out the parts master plan, which does similar to this, have a list of, um, items to be looked at over the course of the, um, whatever. The plan, over the course of the plan and which is similar. And I'm just wondering if this format is something that could be applied to other departments? I guess I'm asking as the C A O, not fire chief that one, but.
It's definitely something that we could work on and work towards. Yep. I believe, uh, that the strat plan report, um, that Emily is working on is going to have a very similar context to it. So there's lots of words there.
Good. I'd rather go ahead and counsel Rainsworth.
To you, Mayor. Um, couple of questions. So in that section of eight point one, uh, nine point one, uh, enter into an agreement with Hamilton Township uh, for coverage, would that also filter out to like, say, Crammy? Because they will be, they may be closer on the east end and Hamilton would be closer on the west end.
So we do have, uh, an automatic aid agreement with Crammy Township or Big Porter and the section down there. And, uh, similarly on the west side, we had come to council a couple of years ago to, uh, enter into an automatic aid agreement for some residents on the west side of the township that Hamilton Fire Stations were closer to than ours. And so far that has been working very well together.
Okay. And, and a couple more, Mayor. Um, uh, the agreement with Alderville First Nation, do we have an agreement with them now? Is that part of the big picture?
The agreement with Alderville, uh, is of, I would say, current status. It has remained unsigned for the last six years. It is something through the new committee that we have struck together with Alderville that we will be working on and addressing uh, with respect to service delivery, delivery, delivery from the township.
Okay, great. And then eighteen point three is the radio communications. So is that part of the saying that we, there are areas in our township that we can't get radio communications?
The radio communications has been, uh, a significant challenge for a lot of the municipalities of Northumberland County. Um, we have, uh, we have now switched over to digital. Um, we're using what I will refer to as more of a Band-Aid solution for right now. Our radio communications has gotten a lot better within the township, but we have not been able to address um, radio communications entering into a building. So as an example, the A T V club is a steel clad building on the inside. When our firefighters are inside that building, we have no radio communication with them. That is against what's called section twenty one, so one of the Ministry of Labor documents for health and safety, that we must have constant radio communications with our firefighters. Um, and every firefighter on every fire, I should have a radio. So those are things that we're going to need to work through and we are working through at the fire chief's table. Um, and when that information or when the conversation ends up back with Northumberland County, I believe what we're trying to work towards is who is actually going to look after these agreements and these work projects.
Thank you, Dave.
Sorry, Mayor, just to follow. So the communication, do, is, do we run that during Northumberland County or is that outside our county?
The, the communication is run by a company in, in Peterborough.
Okay.
Um, that is a, a radio communications company. And, uh, there's conversations as to what do we need to do for the future? Um, we, it has been the same system for a very long period of time. And so what is the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five year plan? Shelf life of, of radio infrastructure is usually ten years. So we're always trying to look ahead and figure out what it is that we're, we're going to do. Uh, Northumberland Paramedic Service just onboarded a brand new radio service. Um, and we haven't had an opportunity to look at that to see if, if that's an option or which direction it would go. So I would suggest that to make future decisions, we're discovering that or figuring out what the plan is going to be.
Thank you. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Dave. Like.
Thank you, um, Mayor Noble. David, just a couple of things. When I was listening to you talk about the radios, uh, is satellite radio something that would be addressed? And, uh, the other part of it, that would address that issue, the other part of it, is fiber optics coming in? Is that going to help at all in some areas?
Um, not with respect to emergency services, radio communications. Number one, uh, we should, we should be moving to a world today where we have an encrypted service so that it can't be listened to. Um, number two, uh, with respect to your satellite radio or satellite communication, satellite telephone, that's a different level and that is a, um, an entire different cost to what it would be. So we're talking about closed radio networks. So Northumberland County, um, every department within the county should be able to talk to each other. We now have a paving system that we can listen to right across the county, chiefs can. Um, but when it comes to radio communications, I can't talk directly to another one unless I'm within a certain area. I switch to their channel, which is a normal thing to do. So there, it, it's, it's multi-level, more complex than in the, in putting the entire package together in the system.
Mayor Noble.
Uh, just one more. When I'm looking at the color-coded chart here, and when I see red, I think maybe that is alert. So I'm thinking was, uh, are they the ones when you're putting in? I would say maybe it's an orangey red, so maybe not a, important, needs to be done as soon as possible. Is that how you did your color-cordating, a level of importance? Because I see that you have done it for the ones that, um, you have completed. And so I'm just wondering, is it just?
It was simply green for means that it's completed and rolling their way.
Yeah.
Um, orange just means the caution level that we're still working and figuring it out and red just means the full stop. We haven't started on it. The red, the red items can be something like, um, it, it has a significant budget impact. Or there's multiple levels that need to be considered before we can implement. So those types of things, but, um, the idea is that each year we are accomplishing a few more. And, and there will be some that are listed as red there that our councils um, may not want to go to, right? So it really all depends. So there's lots of different stuff.
There it is. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll read the resolution. Uh, it is recommended the committee of the whole receive the report, C A O two oh two five dash eighteen, fire department master fire plan update for information. So I can move her in a second. Moved by council Rainsworth. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Stover for the discussion. All in favor? That's carried. Next one was again by the fire chief. And it's the fire and bylaw department two oh two five activities. Go ahead, you okay?
Thank you, Mayor Noble. Yes. Um, to you, Mayor, to council. I don't have a lot to contribute to this report. This is a, an activity report to council to let you know what has been going on, uh, since the start of this year. Uh, to give you an idea, I know there has been questions from different councils with respect to what is bylaw doing. Um, with respect S T Rs, with respect complaints, um, that kind of stuff. How many calls have they been responding to where we're at? So, so really it's just for information, yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead and Deputy Mayor.
To your mayor, Noble, and I, I kind of, it was interesting when you are talking about the short-term rentals. Uh, fifty-five warning let, warning letters hand-delivered. Um, are we still finding a lot of unlicensed S T Rs?
The, the interesting thing, uh, in the environment in this capacity is that there was a lot of S T Rs listed on Airbnb when the last council debated this and started to create the bylaw and then this council completed it. Um, when you go on Airbnb now, there is nowhere near the listing that it used to be. But if you go on A R O, you will find them. So, so what we, there are, there, there are different levels of things that come in. Number one is the bylaw staff can find the listing. Someone can make a complaint, a neighbor can make a complaint. We act on the complaints. Uh, we know where some of them exist. Trying to find the owners of the ones that receive the warning letters can sometimes prove very difficult because they can just simply be numbered companies. So then you end up into a chase. It also becomes a calculated decision of how far you chase that because the more time you spend on it, the more cost associated or the opportunity cost is increasing because we're not dealing with something else. So this was a, a soft approach for us to, to say that you, you have been warned and it has resulted in more applications. It's, it's resulted in some of our arguments of people who feel they don't have to. But our job is to uphold the bylaw.
Go ahead.
Uh, to your mayor, Noble, when there is a breach of some sort, when you do find that you cannot, and you don't want to spend a lot of resources tracking down the owners, do you have the ability to put lock boxes where there will be no entry?
With respect to the bylaw, my understanding is not with, uh, first achieving, uh, a warrant to do so. I don't think you would be able to do that. Um, we are, uh, we have to, uh, by the conclusion of two thousand and twenty-five. And I've actually been, uh, speaking with the C A O of Cramming over the last week about the A N Ps and what we can do. And we do owe this council a report by the end of the year of where we can go with A N Ps.
What's the A N P?
A N P is, is a municipal charge, basically. So we could get its funds that the municipal can charge on a property. And, and if people don't pay it, then the charge can then go on property taxes. So it's a way to keep it in. And if we go to a provincial offenses, I don't believe there's any provincial offenses to uphold the S T R bylaw. So it, it, it is a way for municipalities to have a little vertief in the laws that they're trying to uphold. More and more municipalities are going towards A N Ps in order to uphold the bylaws there.
Thank you.
I'll make a general comment. Two or three years ago, many of our meetings were to deal with the STRs and people not following them, et cetera, et cetera. I'm encouraged by the results that we're seeing today by having some, getting people signed up and sending out letters and the fact that we're not dealing with that on a regular basis. I think that's good. Any comments? Go ahead.
Mayor Lobo, I concur with the fact that we're not seeing anywhere near as many complaints about STRs as we were. So while you may not have 100% compliance with STR licensing, you definitely calm things down if they're made it more enjoyable for people because we're not hearing from them. We've actually seen a significant increase in the last month about dog complaints and animal complaints and zoning complaints than we have with respect to STR.
Good. Oh, read the resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilor Neil.
Just an observation and to something I think all of us need to keep in mind, including the Fire Department, is we didn't have a single structure fire call on here. But meanwhile, when we're looking at what calls we are receiving, the top two are traffic related with the power lines across the roads with vehicle fires. And the third one is medical. And I know there's been some efforts to kind of coordinate the medical piece better, but are there any things, and I don't actually want an answer. I think it's something we need to be thinking about. Is what should we be doing if our fire departments are actually responding to vehicle accidents more so than fires? And that impacts how we structure it, what trainings needed, but how we decide to fund and what vehicles are needed if we are responding more frequently onto the road. And just a personal thought on all of that, the number of very, very expensive pieces of property getting damaged on the 401 by using those great big expensive trucks to try and do traffic control at a busy on the 401. Any steps that can be taken to sort of reduce some of those costs would be beneficial. So it's more stuff to think about for us as council and for the Fire Department on what can be done in that deal with traffic. What should be done?
You're, go ahead.
Yep. So to add to that, when it comes, first of all, the 401, it's a very dangerous highlight. And the training that goes into understanding how to do proper blocking to try to mitigate or limit the amount of vehicle collisions or additional collisions that you may have becomes of significance and priority. The working in communications with the MTO for blocker vehicles becomes more of a priority. Overall, in the fire service, our our public education and fire prevention initiatives, which is first and foremost under the FPA, and why we spend money and time doing that is to try and prevent fires, to try and prevent fatalities. But from the fire service aspect, the building or structure fires that we go to fall into that low frequency, high risk category. There's a lot more high risk placed on the firefighter and the public for those events than there are for the car accidents. Now, having said that with car accidents, car accidents are on a rise as a standard right across the province and the country, mostly because of distracted drive. And there's plenty of information that you can find everywhere to indicate that. Take a drive from here to Covert, I guarantee you'll see it. So that becomes an issue. The other thing that is going to be changing the fire service significantly is the ion battery business that is coming forward because those batteries, once they do start to react and they do go off, there's no way to stop the reaction. So we have to try to mitigate that. We have seen in the fire service as a whole significant amount of explosions, significant amount of extremely hot and fast fast participating fires. So there is a constant evaluation and to monitoring why it is what we're providing. You have seen this fire department in the last four years change their apparatus. Similar to what Counselor O'Neill is indicating, you know, the analysis of what do we need for the future? And it stands to be extremely true that in the next five years, 2030, 2031, when the next apparatus is due to be replaced, you will need to put that information into the decision-making as to where you'll be headed. So thank you for that. Those remarks.
I'll read the resolution. It is recommended that the committee of the whole received report FB 2025 02 Fire and Bylaw, January to May 2025, import food information. I can move in a second. By Deputy Mayor Stover, seconded by Councilor Booth. All favor. That's carried. Next, we're going to Parks and Recreation Facilities Report. And the first report is to do with the advertising at the Holterwood Community Arena Complex. Jeremy's here to do this. Good morning, Jeremy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here. Go ahead.
So previously, we brought forward a request to do an expression of interest for an advertising partnership down at the Arena Complex. We did have one submission that was FutureSign. So just looking to move forward, they're interested in running our advertising for us down there. Offering the township back a percentage commission base, 25% of the successful sales that they execute down there. They do work with a number of neighboring municipalities to the township. Kicks and tires and that's investigating on their deal points that other municipalities seem in mind, so.
That's good. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Lobo. Jeremy, I think this is excellent and it's a great way moving forward. It's consistency on what is going to be appearing through the municipality. And you bring up a valid point that, and I really appreciate the fact that you are letting us know of the time constraints that your department is having. And if we can circumvent it, this is the sort of thing that we need to be looking towards to help us get to the end result. So thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Neil.
I was surprised a moment ago to hear that we would only receive 25% of the revenue in this deal. And A, I'm not sure how much realistic space. We are a very low population municipality, so I'm not sure how much capacity we have to do any kind of major advertising. But then in turn to only get 25%, if we're looking at those boards that are down in the community center now and thinking we're we don't get very much money now and then we're going to get 75% less seems crazy to me. But the other piece is, we don't even know if that's going to start up and not leak again on us.
There was no question there, Mr. Mayor. You're looking at me. There was no question.
Sorry.
No, you're, we should be asking questions.
Sorry, you're right. Should be in the debate afterwards. My apologies for that. But that is correct, that we are only getting 25% of any revenue.
Oh, was the contract court?
Negotiable term, three, they'd be looking for something for three to five years. There's going to be some, obviously, some capital investment on their end for advertising opportunities. They are aware of the
Potential?
Potential lifecycle issues of the arena. This, this is a agreement for the complex, including baseball diamonds and fences and stuff like that as well. So there there would still be opportunities if something were to happen with the arena.
Okay. Mike, do you have another comment?
Yeah, to you, Mayor, just a quick question. Are they local? Is this group local? Future signs?
Through your ministry, I don't actually know where they're based out of. I know that they work with a lot of municipalities. Carrington and Portville locally. Councilor Booth was telling me that that's who they worked with in Ajax as well. So I'm not actually sure where they're headquartered.
Go ahead, Counselor Booth.
And through you, worship, just a question for you to Jeremy. This isn't going to include them being allowed to put anything on our LED signs, right? Correct. Okay. And I guess the last question would be, it says you're working on a service agreement. So will that agreement come to council to okay that once it's, once you work out the details and stuff like that? Does that come before council again, before it gets officially signed?
Yeah.
I'm sure, I would think so.
Okay. And just to answer your question, Counselor, into it, FutureSign is a well-known company that does a lot of advertising in that. So there are certain things that Jeremy can talk about. For example, I know in buildings I've worked where they've put up TV screens and they do a lot of the work, right? Where they'll put up TV screens and that, where they show dressing rooms and then they get advertising space. So there is a cost to them. And I know 25% doesn't sound like a lot, but it is if they're putting in, you know, stuff into the buildings and that.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Mayor Lobo, just another comment. When I hear some of the concerns that this is not just for one facility, this would be facilities across our municipality. So that is going to be a benefit as well, not only to us, but also to the the entrepreneur and knowledge there for added customers. So
And the general public too.
The general public, right.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll read the resolution. That the mayor and clerk is recommended committee of the whole received report PR 2025-15 Holterwood Community Arena Complex complex advertising agreement. And that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute an agreement with FutureSign for the provisions of advertising partners at the Holterwood Community Memorial Arena Complex. Move her in a second. Moved by Counselor Booth, seconded by Counselor Ainsworth. Further discussion, go ahead, Counselor Neil.
I was quite convinced by Deputy Mayor Stover's argument there. And then I read or I listen, and it says that it is specific to the community memorial arena complex. So just one sort of that piece.
You go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So the agreement would say something along the lines of the, obviously, the arena and ball diamonds and any opportunities at the complex, but also any other sponsorship opportunities. If interest presents itself across the municipality.
Okay. What? Counselor Neil.
Should that then be included in the wording before we bring that to us as next week for voting upon?
We can put it on or we can wait till when it comes to the council for approval. Right. What do you suggest?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Typically, these agreements wouldn't come back to council. This one's not coming as part of the bylaw due to the dollar values involved. This was as part of the, by my understanding, as part of the expression of interest process, which is just, the next step is getting council approval just to authorize the mayor and clerk to make that operational, or sorry, authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement as an operational piece. So the agreement in itself wouldn't come back to council, being as an operational piece is just the authority.
So can we, can we add then the portion that says not only the community or the complex is arena, but other facilities as well? Can we add that?
Yeah.
Add that then, please, or do we have to?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, in hearing our manager Parks and Parks explanation, that's something that can be incorporated.
Okay. Everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All favor. That's carried. Bounteous Adopt with Park Program. This is again led by Jeremy, and I think it's a great idea. So Jeremy, do you have any comments or I don't have any questions, but you may have any comments?
Just looking at an adopt a park program, which is a pretty common thing across a lot of municipalities. It's an opportunity for citizens to have some ownership and show some pride. Basically adopting a certain park or trail or space within the municipality and organizing a community cleanup type of event. These, these types of programs focus more around beautification and litter cleanup and that kind of stuff, not obviously work that the staff currently do, but yeah, just, just onboarding a program like this that gives folks some ownership over certain areas.
I think it's a great idea. Any questions? Go ahead, Mike.
That's you, Mayor. More comment, really. I mean, just so I think that's kind of overlapped what we're trying to do with the Parks and Parks Committee. And it would have been nice to see this come through the Parks and Parks Committee first. But it's a great idea and probably coincides with a lot of the little committees that we're putting together. So hopefully we can kind of marry them two together later on. Thank you.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
To you, Mayor Lobo. Just more of a comment that the Bracken Green Thumbs are already looking after the Wicklow Park, which I'm sure Jeremy is well, well aware of as one. So you've got one on your list ready to go. Thank you.
Your government, go ahead.
They're also looking at the little, looking after the Little Heritage Park and the town hall. So they are already involved, but
I think you agree. I just think it's, it's a chance for people to get involved, volunteer, they're making a lot of commitment, but they could still stay in touch. Mayor Gaffey, any comments?
It sort of follows up on Counselor Ainsworth. You know, the need to discuss with the user groups. And unfortunately, on our committee now, we do not have anyone from the former Holterwood. But that was a group that was looking after. In fact, they built that park and they looked after that park at one point. So I can see that if we're thinking of who's the group that's most likely to step forward? And then how do we coordinate what they've done in the past, how they view their role? Because I, I'm not sure that they're going to be running in a line to pick up garbage, but they might be wanting to step forward in a more serious way in terms of the gazebo. I'm not, I shouldn't speak for them. I just know that there were some questions about gazebo maintenance up there. And so, yeah, I think there's some that this is going to take a little bit of careful thought.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Counselor Neil.
That's through you, Mayor. So can we digest this with, with like a list of things that people are that kind of your your idea that you want to do is like, you know, maybe put together all boat launches, all our little parks, our little beaches? You know, and where people could you know, request that those areas that they would help look at or beautify.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, that's typically how programs like this work is you make a list of different areas available for one maintenance or adoptions. And then groups of people form and get together and identify that that's the area that they want to maintain. Certainly, the Parks and Rec Committee would be a massive asset in identifying some of those areas.
Perfect.
Your government?
I would just also add that the New Watten would be another group. So I'm glad to see that the request is to go to the committee for my law given to this, but it's an interesting idea, but it's bought. It's going to take some thinking to implement it.
We have just to manage this.
I think it's a great idea.
Why don't we do it, so? I'll read the resolution. It is recommended that the committee Is recommended that the committee is recommend the committee of the whole of the corporation of Donjo Valley. And Agnes Falls, that the committee of the whole receive report P R two oh two five fourteen township adopt a park program for information. And that the committee of the whole recommend to council that the adopt a park program for the township of Allen and Cullen will be approved. And that the parks and recreation advisory committee be directed to generate a short list of parks and green spaces for staff to include in the adopt a park program. Move her to second. Moved by Deputy Mayor Stover. Seconded by Council Ainsworth. Any further discussion? All favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. Uh, next is nine three Holden Memorial Arena and Recreation Complex Fundraising and Hock Committee. And Jeremy, you're going to lead us through this one as well?
Sure, um, it's it's pretty straightforward. Obviously, we've been asked, we're looking at a number of different um options and and routes for funding for um for the arena for short term and long term work. Um, this is you know, fundraising is is I don't know, is one of those avenues and and this is our best book for getting that started.
Okay. And there's no, you haven't, no uh church reference or nothing like that yet, but that that stuff will be going. And the reason, and the reason I'm asking that is the uh, you know, I would think some people will pledge some money. Uh, but over the understanding something goes ahead. And that makes sense, you know?
It it does make sense. I believe at the bottom where there is a terms of reference.
Yeah, it's page three.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
To you, Mayor Local, and this is something uh when we were discussing this last year that came through loud and clear from members of the public. And they have been waiting for us to uh put a committee in place and they are just waiting. There are different uh groups, uh, different people that have spoken to me already that have ideas. They're really excited to come on board and get going. So I'm really excited to see this coming forward. So thank you, Jeremy, again. Uh, you're really rocking it today as well, all as well as the other staff as well. Thank you.
Anybody else with any questions? Your governor?
Um, just to your point about there are fun people who want to uh commit who would want to see a business plan, which leads us back to the direction given by council to come and talk to the province and other potential stakeholders. I found it interesting Anthony's comments about how Brighton initially went and asked small and got nothing. And they updated their plan and asked big and they got big. And that is my observation with um other municipalities that you have to be doing something new to end up with the same old, small, underutilized arena that we have right now is going to be a tough sell for fundraising and it's going to be a tough sell to the province. So anyway, that's my comment, but my question through to Jeremy is when can we expect to see a business plan or a funding plan coming forward?
You're aware, I I don't have an estimate on that right now.
The first thing you want to do is get a committee is my understanding.
Correct.
And you you want you want council's approval to to create a committee?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I don't think that's a problem. I'll set up a committee. Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, through you, Mayor. Yeah, I I'm also ecstatic about this year getting it going. Um, the um, will this be our, our, our um our, our, what am I, so how we we're going to ask for um this amount of money? And are we going to put together like um what it's for? So when we're if when we're doing fundraising, you know, it's for the ice, it's for the boards, it's for the glass, it's for whatever, right, for the arena? So will staff put that together or will the committee put that together?
I would say, uh, I would say the staff. Well, that that'll be with the committees.
Yeah, it's okay to say it's for the arena, but it would be nice to have a broader uh, you know, broader answer to people that what they what they're funding for.
You're going to do?
The the mandate in the terms of reference speaks speaks to and uses the language that was in the recommendation put forward by um Sierra Atlantic Management in their needs assessment. And so that's what the funds would be allocated for.
Okay.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
I can't resist, but on May sixteenth of twenty twenty-three, I had a notice of motion to set up one of these committees. So we have, I mean, I guess having a committee directly looking at it at this point is a good thing. But we're a year away from being linked up and and such. And we have decided time and again as a council not to have a committee. I'm not, I'm just pointing it out just because just because.
Well, now we have somebody on staff that's been on for a little while, because he just, I think he's probably the right guy. Mike, go ahead.
Uh, through you, Mayor, also, I mean, you know, leading up to these steps and the things that we had to accomplish first before we could actually get a committee together. Um, you know, so we're not throwing the cart ahead of the horse here. So, yeah, we had to put the brakes on and slow down, but definitely this is the best way that we've done it. And we now know what our steps are going to be and move forward. Um, you know, I don't agree with some comments about the memorial arena here in our township. I know what it means for this township. And I know what this fundraising is going to mean to a lot of people. And glad to see it come and we'll move forward. Thank you.
The comments? The recommendation is, it is recommended the committee of the whole received report P R two oh two five sixteen. Holden Memorial Arena and Recreation Complex Fundraising and Hock Committee for Information. And that the committee of the whole recommended council that the terms of reference for the Holden Memorial Arena and Recreation Complex Fundraising and Hock Committee be approved and the staff be authorized to be given approval. Moved by Council Ainsworth, seconded by Deputy Mayor Stover. Further discussion? All favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, next we have uh administrative report. First report that we have is the municipal office RFQ report. And Dave, you're gonna, you got your, you and your team there to uh present and ask any questions? So why don't you go ahead and start?
Thank you, Mayor Local, through you to council. Um, I wanted to be known before I speak to this a little bit that we remain here um ready and able and willing to work towards uh whatever the rule of council shall be. Um, the goal here was to create an RFQ to bring back information to council so that council could understand uh what the process might be for uh the investigation of an intrusive um uh structural assessment of the graph and building. All in all, we received five votes back. Um, the three of us that are before you here now to review them. Three of them, we felt, did not meet the requirements of the RFQ or did not answer the questions within the RFQ. The the, there was a couple of them that got into uh some hourly charges. There was a base amount to engage, but um identifying the liability concern with regret with respect to going into that uh into those agreements was going to set a township up for a significant amount of unknown and potentially unknown charges. The uh, what ended up happening was there was two companies um that had visual hadn't made the time to come and look at the building. Obviously, Pinchon had did in the past. Nor took the time to uh send a representative out that spent a couple hours to look at the building. And we felt that that is probably one of the key factors why there um why there are RFQs were were fairly similar. However, Pinchon went one step further and that was to identify um the recommendations or the scope of work that I put in the report for council to understand the step-by-step process that that would be required and then the financial risks with respect to doing that. Um, staff did not put any recommendations here for you because the the effort here was to provide council with the information. And then, as I mentioned, to start this um report that we remain here um at your service.
Thank you. Do uh any of your cohorts have any comments, Don or Jim? Thank you. Questions from council? We must have questions. Your governor, go ahead.
I I was anticipating that Council Booth might have some questions, but um it's about hazardous materials testing. And I know that Pinchon are the leaders as environmental engineers. And that our very first relationship with Pinchon was that we tasked them with I and we're going back in time and I don't have the name of the report in front of me, but to tell us where there was environmental concerns and there was an eight million dollar number associated with that. We know that number because the auditor brought that number to us. But that report has never come before council. But that is what their specialty is, is this hazardous material tested. They are environmental engineers. They are not structural engineers. So in my mind, we're talking about two different tasks. One of which I have hoped was already done, sorry, Steve.
I I don't, I wish not to be involved with the debate. Our job is to bring you the information. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I do not want to get into um any sort of character referencing of the engineer or the company either. I want completely removed.
Sorry, I do have a specific question then. What do we know? Because we've already paid for a report from Pinchon. What do we know about the hazardous materials in that building?
Um, to provide you the direct answer on that, I attached the report that came from the A R O report that was given as part of the two thousand and twenty-three audit. And that's where the eight million dollars came from and it was assigned to our balance sheet. So that report is in there. And it identifies line items like windows, soap, cocking, roofing material, that type of stuff, drywall. Um, I'm not an expert on building materials or hazardous materials, so I'm just providing council the report that we were given.
And that was, and that was uh requested by the CRA or or the province consisted that you do that for all the buildings and that that was the same number. I assume all this fell across the province. Can I answer your question, your governor?
Sort of, yes. So if that is, then we have a sheet like this for each of our buildings then? So could we receive and council receive all of those sheets so we've got a better sense of where all of our buildings are?
I absolutely will go back and have a look for you, Council. My understanding is it came came to council as part of the audited information for one free because it was presented to council by our auditors. But I will absolutely go back and and see if it did. And if it did not, then I will go through the proper processes to identify report to council.
Thank you. Go ahead, Council Ainsworth.
To you, Mayor. Um, you know, just one quick question and um to all of us right here. You know, do we shell out seven hundred thousand dollars to find out if this building is any good? Or do we just build a new one? Go to step two in our arena plan?
Yes, I think you're asking that as that uh to be rather than a specific question to.
Well, I think that's a it's a question to council, but you know, do we spend the seven hundred thousand dollars or do we just say you know, let's find the funds to build a new one? Add on to the fundraising.
You have a follow?
Uh, no comment, Mayor, then. Again, I expressed that I don't want to be involved in the debate. If there's any questions specific for staff, we'll answer. If not, we'll remove ourselves and council can debate.
Go ahead. Deputy Mayor.
Through you, Mayor Local, to Dave. I was trying to get my numbers straight. So they will come in for a cost of forty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars. And does that cost all, does that clue put them back what they've taken out?
No, there's there's a there's a caveat to that and it's explained within the the scope of our work.
I knew.
And and so the forty-eight thousand is the total cost to do the structural assessment, which includes in their opinion, the removal of the interior walls to expose the structure to assess it. The they've identified twelve thousand, five hundred for hazardous materials testing, which they've identified must be done before they disturb any of the walls, meaning removal. That's the same thing that the NOR company identified that they needed to have proof of hazardous materials materials testing before they would start their project. So the hazardous materials is identified as as in the scope of work as the first line item. If they discover that there's hazardous materials, that's when they jump down to the other to say the abatement is going to cost in the neighborhood of two hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is in the process of my understanding of the removal of the materials in there. Um, but again, I I refer to the information provided in the report that we provided for council.
So so just to make sure I understand, and I think I do, the forty-eight thousand dollars is to go into the building and remove the walls and and take out the uh to find out if there's asbestos.
The the forty-eight thousand dollars is what they've identified in total. The twelve thousand, five hundred is the first step to do the hazardous materials testing. Okay. Once they've done the hazardous materials testing, if there's no hazardous materials, then yes, they've identified it's forty-eight thousand to continue.
To continue to dig up walls.
If there's no hazardous materials.
Yes.
If there is hazardous materials, that's where they've identified and I put it in the financial part of the report how much more it costs to do that. And I included the error report for you as well because there's there's more than there's more than let's say there's more than reasonable doubt to identify that potentially there's a high potential due to the age of the building that there is hazardous materials. I'm only bringing that information to council just to help identify what the risks are for this project. And we also put in there a small paragraph to say that there are there are a lot of things to consider with respect to looking at an older building today. And whether it's the municipal building or the arena or another building within the municipality that the township owns, there's, there's just a lot more to consider. And and planning is one of those ideas or things that should be accomplished. So that's
Oh, I think I'm I'm correct in saying forty-eight thousand dollars pulls the walls. You you disagree?
No, it's the CEO said that they'd have to do testing. The forty-eight thousand dollars, I understand through me, through you, your worship, is after the the ceiling and the walls have been removed. That's their inspection, right?
No, it's so in the scope of work, it identifies and in the pricing. The first step is to do the hazardous materials testing and twelve thousand, five hundred. If there's no hazardous materials present, the removal of the walls and to do the assessment in total is forty-eight thousand. And it includes the testing. But the caveat risk is if there is hazardous materials, then it's going to cost a lot more. And it also, it doesn't include the cost of moving. And it also, it doesn't include the cost of moving staff or you having to set up a different location or whatever. So. Again, this is just bringing the information to you and. And hopefully you can decide which direction you want to.
We ready to? Okay, go ahead.
Just as we're asking questions, so no, no comment. I'll save my comment till later. I just wanted to know. Uh, through you, the committee, NOR engineering, are they also recommend recommending a? A um. It's got here, uh, the the complete structure beside the walls and finishes be removed too? I know pension is recommending that an intrusive structure review should be carried out. And they're saying that they want to remove the entire wall finish, ceiling finishes and everything like that. So that's pensions. But was NOR the same way? Are they suggesting that you have to remove everything too or not?
Um, through the mayor's, through your council, NOR is proposing for isolated locations. Isolated investigation of the wall of a ceiling. They're not, they aren't including here for. Entire removal at all. They just, they identified the isolated locations.
Of tested. And and is that what uh? Such as proposing is not just for clarity, you know, and it will.
Not for testing the hazardous materials. For their structural assessment. Was isolated areas to inspect, but they haven't identified what areas or how much. So we don't know. We may get into one area while we have, we open that. That's what we did. Now we're going to have to do this. There's no, there was no scope of work provided. That's why pension provided the most information as to what this would look like.
Okay, well, it comes to booth.
So I guess my next question is then, so that to me being a concern, so NOR saying though. See pension, what I'm seeing is they gotta remove everything. Which is like it's the nuclear option of take it all down and then we'll look at it. NOR sounding like. More to me that they're willing to go into the building and say, we're going to remove certain sections. For everybody has to do the testing first, right? Am I correct on that?
NOR has indicated in their scope or in other about of quote. We assume that no hazardous materials abatement will be required. Should hazard material be present, we will support the township and engage you qualified consultant and abatement specialists. So the scope and its formation of this are outside our per intention. So they have even, they're assuming there's no hazardous basis, sorry, hazardous materials at all. And they're not even including anywhere in here for hazardous materials.
So through your worship, am I, am I safe to assume then that both companies, whoever it is? The the testing has to be done before anybody does anything. So whether it's NOR or whether it's pension, somebody's got to go around and do tests to say you you can. This is asbestos, it's not or whatever. If it's not, we're fine, we can continue on. If there is. With NOR doing, it sounds like NOR is doing a more selective approach to say. There will be sections we need to say pension is saying we're taking everything down. Is that correct? Okay, so we can, that's just my questions for them. I'll save my funds for when we can have the funds.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mayor.
Yes, what is?
Just, just with that, um. If I may to our team over here. So NOR has just provided the thirty-five thousand whereas pension has. Suggested twelve thousand five hundred for. Uh, going in to do the testing, is that right?
Through your mayor, to uh, Deputy Mayor Silver. So in in our responsibility in looking at what has been obtained from the R R P process is that. We have one company that has identified the costing in a complete package of what hazardous materials would be. And the other company has provided a very similar. Dollar value to do the structural assessment. But has indicated that the hazardous materials testing is beyond their scope. So they would assist us in obtaining a consultant. And a a a specialist and a big specialist to deal with it. It provided a a level of uncertainty or unknown, so our. Report was justified around what information we could give the council in its in its inclusivity. So that you have the most information before you. It does present an alternative option for you for sure.
But also, if I may, Mayor local. Um, I could be a considerably more amount of money because. You're talking consultants and then they would help you do, find somebody else, which would, there would be costly.
Again, I would, I would point you towards debate with that and let you guys decide.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Is it clear, uh, what has to be done first? And I'm asking about staff. Or is everybody saying the staff after we move before we do anything?
With respect to, through your mayor, with respect to hazardous materials, that is definitely something that would need to be obtained. And what has been recommended through the reports? Not through both of them, through the one because the one is the scope of hazardous materials testing. And that is their recommendation. Um, I have not, uh. I have not consulted staff on how they feel about hazardous materials testing and remaining in the building. That is probably something that would have to be done, depending on the decision that council makes. Um, I I am not even certain if. This is the right direction that we even should be going because in many aspects of the municipality and we. Heard it here earlier. Planning, so much planning is needed. That we really need to figure out where we're all headed with so many different things. And as Counselor Neil mentioned in the last part of our report, um. Completely spot on about the province is not investing into old infrastructure. They're investing into the next fifty years, policies that they came out with, the entirety of why we received the A R O. Report on our balance sheet. So there's just so much that. We really need to know where council wants to go before we can provide you more information because it's not our decision.
Thank you. Well, here, Counselor Neil, you're asking a question?
I am asking a question and I mean, you may not have an answer and that's fair enough with that. Would? A hazardous materials test? Be something, even if we wanted to dispose of a building in the future, that would be something. That would still need to be done before we could do disposal of a building?
I I would thank you for your question, through your mayor. I believe uh, a question back to that would be. Is the opportunity there to sell as is? Or are you wanting to maintain that place? So when you look at. The municipal office where it sits, it is in. Prime commercial real estate. Is that something where you want to be or you? Do you envision something different for the future? If the will of council is the same, we absolutely want to stay there. Then great. If council says, well, what should we consider? That's when we go back to the needs assessment for municipal office. So again, it comes back to the planning, but it is the valid question. Your government?
Yes, just I I agree with your big picture on this and and definitely something I've been arguing for. Glad we're on the same page that. Um. But it is a question and I I see our building official going, I'm not sure. It is one of those. If we're making decisions about our buildings, it would be useful. They require the A R O from the province. And I had naively thought that. We were getting a hazardous materials testing when we first hired pension, but we were just. Being provided with the likelihood or the possibility of hazardous materials there. But isn't that something about any discussion and certainly especially with commercial real estate sale that? A purchaser would want to know. Anyway, I I don't know what the norm is on that piece, but I think it would be useful to figure that out before we make decisions.
I would think you have to, you know, you have to dispose.
Right, so we have though, it's sold.
I mean.
We have no one now. They've said there's a probability of it. So, yeah.
Based on, and that's only, and there was two different things. I got me confused on those two business. Uh, pension was initially hired to do the. Uh, respond to the auditor's request. That uh, it be looked at and seen like all the other buildings, whether it contains asbestos or not. They didn't do any testing or anything else like that. Like you said, they just looked at the age of the building and they. Uh, made it made that calculation. The second one was when we brought pension in to do a assessment of the building, entirely different thing. And that's, that's when we got that re- report that they supplied us. Correct? Okay, anybody else have any further questions?
No.
Yes.
Hi, May. Uh, um, the word needs assessment for the um. Municipal office, what all would that include? Can Mayor Lobo put this to um? One of the gentlemen at the table?
I mean, discuss. The needs assessment for the municipal office would basically include um. An and an overall picture of. The services that the township needs to provide to the residents and where and how, but also, you know. Do a a thorough review of who's working under that building right now and is that the building where they need to be? Um. What what services actually need to be, what services and staff, sorry, uh, need to be actually located in a facility like that.
Go ahead.
If I could also, would or could it include other avenues as well? So if they are talking about, well, I'm just going to use you, Don, because you're at the end of the table. Dom, the building department shouldn't be there. Would they uh, show up with an exist or with a uh, an example of where they should be? Is that the sort of thing, the scope or what we are right now, but not necessarily planning for the future?
So through uh, Mr. Mayor, I I would suggest that a needs assessment still before it could be anything that we wrote into it for sure. Um, but that's, that's definitely the avenue that we're we're looking at as well, right?
And uh, Mayor Lobo, just a comment, we are. Our hamlet is changing with the amount of. Building that is coming on just in the hamlet, so I'm just wondering if um. Before we go this route that we not, that would it not be a good idea? I just put it out there for a needs assessment before we. Could be into a big jackpot here. So that this is a question and a comment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know what the answer to that is. Cause it it's it's the chicken and the egg thing.
Well, and we are.
Uh, so I just want to make sure I understand it correctly, at least correctly if I'm wrong. The forty-eight thousand dollars will give us us a testing to see if there's. Um, hazardous materials. Right? And then after that, we're going to spend anywhere, if assuming there is some, we're going to spend anywhere from two hundred. To three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to abate that material. And then after that, we'll probably go to a structural assessment, exterior walls assessment. Window and roof assessment and materials and electrical and plumbing. And that's about another fifty thousand dollars. Correct? The, uh, and that's, that's a logical order to do that, is it? And that does not tell us. How much we're going to spend and fix it? If we have to fix it?
What I, through your mayor, what I put into the report next for you. Uh, under the costing.
Yep.
Is that hazardous materials testing is twelve thousand five hundred.
Yep.
The structural assessment is nineteen five. The exterior wall system, windows, roof site features eleven five, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing assessment is forty-eight hundred. And then allowance not included in total is is listed, but the forty-eight three hundred is what gets you. Um. The assessment, if there's no hazardous materials, but they still do the testing. If they do the testing and there's hazardous materials, then your abatement costs and everything go up to that two hundred to three fifty. As identified in our R F Q.
Yeah.
However, counselor booth uh, as the questions that were asked with respect to the company NOR. They have identified that they would do a less invasive. Structural assessment, but still required hazardous materials testing, of which they said that they would assist the township. In acquiring that opportunity.
Thank you. There's more.
Yes.
Go ahead, Counselor Booth.
At that, through your worship, the question then, um, I know in the R A, they, uh, R F. Uh, Q or whatever it is you put out, it was an R F P or of Q. There was certain documents that I think it was jewel engineering and correct me if I'm wrong, that was done in either two thousand and two or nineteen ninety-two or something. And I'm wondering if council could be sent that because they supposedly way back then, and that was before all of us here, including the mayor. That um, they looked at some structural issues and that, and there was some recommendations. And one question would be, was anything ever done by the council back then? And two, back then, when they did the structural things, uh, they didn't do any invasive. Uh, saying that, oh, to look at things, we have to remove everything. And I guess. That will be my comment later, is the differences between the two companies, but is it possible that we can? Cause I went to go and look at it, it was taken down. Can we be sent those reports? Was it jewel?
So those, those reports were listed on the website and so all public could get them and yes, I could forward those to you.
Okay, and was it jewel? Do you know, gentleman, or I'm not sure?
Uh, not a hundred percent. There was a couple of different ones. There's one that is really old and there's one that is newer. And then there was also drawings of the addition that was put on to the building, which included the bridge connection to. The building that is to the east of that property.
And I think it's important for us, council, to be able to read those reports that were done, and they might have been fifteen, twenty years ago, but. What they found and whether or not, I guess we could get answers, is that the council of that time, did they? Do any of those remedial things or did they just leave it? I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Any further questions? Okay. Who wants to start? Thank you, gentlemen. We might have something that you asked me, but it'll just be, there's something that we got.
So through you, your worship, just like, I guess my concern is, is that pension, that company is recommending to say. That in their belief, they gotta remove everything. They're removing all the walls, they're removing all the. The ceiling, this, that and everything. So whether or not there's asbestos or not, and I think we all agree. The first thing we need to find out is there asbestos in the building or hazardous materials, because if there is none, if they do the testing. And lucky for us, there's nothing. Then we're okay. We we're going to do, uh, other than, I shouldn't say we're okay, because pension is still saying. Even if there's no asbestos or nothing, they want everything removed. Which I find, in my opinion, is overly excessive. NOR is suggesting, no, if it's. We need to do certain sections. Why would we be going with a company that says we're going to take everything down? We're going to rip all the finishes down and everything. In these expenses, it doesn't talk about putting all the drywall back and everything else, which will be. Literally thousands and thousands of dollars. So I think in my mind, before we spend anything, we need to know, do we have hazardous materials in there? And two, why would we be looking at a company that's saying, we suggest tearing everything down? I don't like that idea. That's why I'd like to read the reports from, it was ninety-two or two thousand and two. And I'm going to say jewel, but I don't know for sure. Some company came in and reported to council at those days some structural issues. And were they fixed? Were they not? And in back in those days, if they could look at the structural things and suggest remedies. Why are we looking now that we gotta rip everything up? Because if we don't have to do the abatement, we're looking at four, five hundred thousand dollars less. And it could be that we could fix this building for, you know, with all the assessment. And it could be that we could fix this building for, you know, with all the assessment, to fix everything, it could be a hundred thousand dollars or less. And I know the comment made by you, Mike, yeah, I agree with you, if we're gonna look at, it's gonna cost us seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. Maybe we have to look somewhere else, but even building. This, the floor space in the new arena, if we looked at that, you're more than a million dollars just to add on that piece just for the town office. So, either way, we're at for a big expense investment. You know, find out what we have to do. Thank you.
I confirm that until we know whether or not we have hazardous materials, we don't have clue what we're working with, so that is the first step. But I think the bigger issue before us as council is, what are we doing about our buildings? All of our buildings, we have an asset management plan. That was um commissioned by the previous council, and there is no asset management plan for building. And that means that if. We can't go to the government and ask for money if it's not in our asset management plans, we have to figure out how to get it in there. But even other funders such as Trillium, which, you know, often does come through with some very nice grants to help with office improvements. Are they going to require an asset management plan as well, but? So I think there's two pieces, one, I really do want to know, not just that building, but all of our buildings. Where are we? Do we have asbestos or not? And we're going to need those to make any sort of an asset management plan, at least in my mind, to know what kind of a building we're working with. Um, and that was, like, the question I asked, how does that impact? Every di- potential decision, if there's asbestos in a building and disposal of that building, and I could. You've already sort of answered that, that we do have it to be followed out through. So, anyway, there's mine, I wanna know what's in there before we can decide on any path. And then we can make some decisions.
Do you, Mayor? You know, I, I would agree, you know. Let's just check for the asbestos first, cause that's gonna be the biggest, the biggest argument of what we do with it. I mean, other than that, um, until we find out that. We don't know what we're looking at. I mean, we got a lot of numbers here, and that adds up to quite a significant amount of money. So, um. The biggest thing is, I don't know if they could just like. If they could just do some test holes. Find out if there's asbestos in the, in the wall.
In the walls, in the floors, everything, cause that's, that's what you're dealing with, with that stuff.
There must be a tool that can drill in the wall and pull that whole piece right out.
Uh, I don't know how to do that, but.
Well, either way, through your worship, pension said that it's twelve thousand five hundred, so if we have to pay, I know they're very, uh. I don't wanna say that, that's, that's the bread and butter, pension is abatement and asbestos and things like that. That maybe we go back to them to say that they would like the materials, hazardous materials tested. And pay that money and find out.
Yep.
First, and then we need to look at what we're gonna do in the future, because I believe this, just through your worship, that. If they say there's none, then we're back to square one and say, okay, let's decide on who we wanna go with, if they say there is. Then the decision gets done, do we go with somebody like NOR that says we're gonna do selective. Uh, spots and not ru- remove everything, or are we structural, or are we going with pensions, which is saying that we remove everything?
Yep.
Go ahead, let me hear.
Through your mayor logo. I tend to not look at the NOR architects and engineering, only because of their limitations with this project. The RFQ, um, if memory serves me right, this has been a long trade note affair. It was two-fold, it was for a structural re- uh, structural review and for. Just doing the, uh, and doing the testing for the asbestos, so it was two things. Can we just have them come in and do the testing without doing the structural review? I think that's probably one of the reasons why they're removing all the walls.
I, I think we have, I, I, I think we're all saying the same thing, perfect.
Yep.
Test for, test for asbestos, and let us know what's there. Go ahead, council group.
Uh, well, two things, just the comment that the, the mayor made is true, but if you also read there. Pension may retain a sub consultant for specific portions of the review and analysis that's found necessary, so they don't have. All that, as Mary Catherine said, they're not a structural engineer type thing, they could subcontract that, their big thing is abatement in that.
And that's what we want to know about, whereas the other company doesn't know about that.
The, yeah, it's reversed, but they're more a structural engineer, they don't do abatement, so. I think as the mayor is saying, I would agree, I think we're all saying, we need to have. The, what are we dealing with in there, is there asbestos, is there not, who knows? And once we find that out, then we can go back to deciding who we have, whether we go to a full-blown. Or whether or not we, we don't do the full-blown.
And uh, Mayor Lobo, just one other thing. With uh, the twelve thousand five hundred, and this would go to Dave. I know, I know it's in here, but I'm getting, I'm getting bogged down with details. Is, are they taking the walls out, Dave, when they do the asbestos testing? Or are they just taking the walls out for the structural review?
I, I'm, I'm gonna answer that question this way. Um, number one for clarity, the, the. The RFQ provided with the scope of work is. From a senior forensics engineer, senior project manager, building science and sustainability, not, nothing to do with the bar. The second thing is, I think with the questions at the table, most likely, the council has the right to know. It might be an opportunity for you that, that maybe you would like staff to bring in. Uh, a, a asbestos specialist, or abatement specialist, or somebody to speak to council to help answer your questions. If that helps you make further decisions, we're, again, as I said, happy to help you, and. Uh, I was just speaking to Dawn about maybe that's an opportunity for you. Um, maybe you want a presentation on it, any way I can help.
Your governor.
Yes, I would love such a presentation, because. We're talking specifically about the um municipal building. Office building at this point, but it applies to every building, we already talked about the arena, well. You know, it was also built at a time when asbestos was being used. Um, so we do need, it's going to impact a lot of our projects we do, when the addition was put on of the new library. There was actually asbestos at, at being done. Not in this section, it had no asbestos, but the section behind the two floors where the kitchen is and where the old library used to be. Uh, that was built in nineteen sixty-seven, and so in two thousand and eleven, when they did this building, they did take the asbestos out. So maybe if we knew where to find records, we might find, for example, to uh, Greg's points. About uh, what was done in around two thousand. I have to assume that they. For sure, at that point, we're already aware of the dangers of asbestos and would have had some. Plan for it at that point, so if, we may be lucky, we may do this study and find out that it isn't there, but I do think. That eight million dollar number, when it was brought by the auditor, and it's primarily around asbestos, I really want a better understanding of that number.
Okay, so while I, while I summarize now. In, in my head anyways, Greg is asking for some reports on the buildings, uh. Restructuring or whatever, changes, uh, for two thousand and.
I, I'm not quite sure, I know it was part of the RFQ, there was things there, that was way back before any of our time about. Structural review of the building and what they suggested, but, and I only read it quickly, I should have downloaded it. I didn't see anything to say whether council acted on anything, did they do anything, did they not, did they? But that would be secondary, I think what we're saying, Mr. Mayor, all of us are agreed, we need to know. What are we dealing with, and, and I believe, I mean, we have a price there from pension saying it's twelve thousand five, instead of us going back. In the RFQ, it says in there, we may take part, take none. Take some of it, negotiate other things, if we can ask the C A A or go back to them to say, guess what? We're willing right now to spend the twelve thousand five hundred to have we come in and do a. If, the um, what's the word, I want, they wanna do the uh, the, find out where it is, right? If we have that. And the questions, hazardous materials to find out, and the question, I guess, from Dave was answered this great, is. Talk to pension to say, of course, we want this to be done and staff aren't there, so is it possible? To do it on a Saturday and Sunday, they set up the negative thing and they do testing and, and all this, so that staff are not involved?
I think Mayor Lobo, uh, they're the experts in that, so that would be something coming forward. The minute you, as you know, uh. Disturb asbestos, it's in the air, so I don't think just a weekend would do, I'm not an expert in abatement. So that certainly would be a question that could go i- in my mind, anyway.
But it's not abatement, it's just testing, so.
Well, I mean, test.
I think the acid, I think like Mike said, did probably, if not an expert, they probably just do drilling and stuff like that, I don't suspect they're gonna be. Tearing our each section, so I'm not an expert, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Let me do that, Dave?
Through your mayor logo, so, one of the things I, I was just speaking to Dawn about, I've asked on to send an email out to. The building officials in county, to understand if anybody knows of anybody that is. Uh, a recommendation for an abatement specialist, or somebody who's specialist in asbestos that could come and speak to the council. Um, I, I am aware that there are some very serious and significant legislative requirements when it comes to. Uh, dealing with asbestos, and we have to be extremely careful, so I think that um. I, I think providing more information to council is. Was an offer in the beginning, and definitely something for staff is prepared for you.
Is there else? Look.
Are you, Mayor? Although I think it's a great idea, I, I just, I mean, the bottom line is, we got no asbestos in there, so can we just have someone come in and do some test holes? Like, I'm sure they have drills that are eight inches. A hole saw, or that they can pop in that wall and pull that hole insert out, in different places and find out if there's asbestos in the most test hole. And then if there's not, they can fix that spot, like it wasn't even there. That's what I think we need to do, and if it's twelve thousand dollars to do that. That's what we really need to know.
The only, the only thing I'd like to know is, is, is that what's recommended from? Uh, to drill that hole and then leave it there, or should it be covered up, or can you do that, or? Let's, why, let's weigh our own intentions.
There's gotta be a simple way to find out if there's asbestos in the wall, or they're ripping everything apart.
There is, well, it's safer.
Yeah, that, that's a good question, and I've seen it in the school board, whenever you work your school board, and it's not as invasive as we think it is. I don't think you go in there and you're drilling big, I've seen them test. Uh, things in boiler rooms and in walls and things like that, and it's, they try to be as least invasive as possible, right? But that's, I'm no expert, so I'm not gonna make a sure comment, but I think we have a price of around twelve thousand five hundred, and. I agree with what Dave said, let's have somebody maybe come in before we even spend that to say. What's our options at twelve thousand five hundred, is it gonna affect staff? And is it all covered up and it's all safe, and then once we find out what the answer is, then we can look at, okay, who are we going to go with? Because it's gonna dramatically increase that if we find out, uh, you know. I mean, whether or not there's asbestos or not, pension is saying that they have to remove everything. When the other option is, if you went with NOR, they're saying, no, we're gonna do selective things, so we have to wait until we find out whether there is anything we're dealing with or not.
But there, NOR isn't doing that.
NOR to me, it would be advantageous to know what their selections is. Cause then what does that mean? I mean, they could say, okay, we'll do this, 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 and this, and then.
But if they're, if they're a registered engineering company and they put a stamp on it, they're experts, then know to say that they come in and this is. Sections that they need to look at, and they stamp that right to, but that's after, we all agree, we have to find out. What are we dealing with first, we could all be surprised, because that building's so old, that there is no asbestos in there, I've seen that before, because. If it's way pre the fifties and sixties, who knows, it could be real plaster in there and everything, I don't know.
So where we at?
So, well, I think where we're at, correct me if I'm wrong, is Dave, we want you to send on to get some information. From the other, from the other municipalities to see what they're doing. Uh, and also, do you wanna hear asbestos expert? I think we do, we can get such a name.
Mayor, Mayor Lobo, so, uh, Emily, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you need is recognition from committee of the whole council. Okay, for this, and then council will be able to provide staff.
So.
Or need. I mean, that you can, maybe. Oh, we can, we can provide that direction. With more information to come back, so. Now that makes sense, thank you. Mayor Gartner?
Um, I'm wondering if since pension already did the hazardous. V A R O report, asset retirement obligation report, if we could ask. Them to come in and walk us through that report, that might actually help us quite a lot.
We can do that, thank you, we can talk in one evening, we can do that.
Mayor, again, I just think we're throwing the cart ahead of the horse there, if we don't have asbestos in the wall, we don't have to do any of it. Bring somebody in and find out if we have asbestos in the wall. Without presentations, without nothing, one of these guys came in and asked first, but.
Your governor.
I think that both, I absolutely agree, that has to happen, what you are saying. But mine is more to do with asset management for us. And looking at our buildings, but it's sort of a separate thing, they're not the same thing.
How could we find out if whether our offices were covered in asbestos or not?
Go ahead.
Uh, just as, understanding what is being asked for, a word of caution to council. Health and safety requirements when it comes to asbestos, testing, abatement, anything to do with it, or very specific. Guidelines, policies that need to be followed, so, again, uh. The investigation side of this is the slow and cautious way to go forward. Before council gives any direction, staff to move ahead in any one direction. The entire process, which I know has been long already. Really has been about mitigating liability to the township, to council, and staff.
Mike, or Greg?
So, I, I agree with what Mike's saying, so I believe if we can ask Dave to go back to pension. And ask them about the materials. How to just test it for twelve thousand five hundred, instead of us going out again and asking and getting all the information for Dawn and him to come and tell us. And Dave can ask them at that time, the twelve thousand five hundred, what does that mean, what does the testing mean? Cause we all are going from all kinds of stuff to maybe it's not. Pension might be able to come to us to say, yeah, that testing can be done, and there's no issues at all with staff and everything, and if they come back and tell us that. Then I think I agree with Mike, then let's proceed. If they say, oh, no, you have to have everybody out and everything like that, well, then we need to. We need to look at it, I don't think the twelve thousand five hundred, you're gonna have to go, that, but I'm no expert, so I say. You've got it already, the price there, let's not start going back and forth and having somebody come back to us to say, oh, this, that. Dave can talk to pension, he spoke to them before, to just say, what does it involve, and could we do it in the evening or on the weekend, and it. As long as it's completely safe for staff, then I say we go ahead and we get that done first, and then we can look at plan B. Unless they come back to Dave and say, guess what, Dave, it can't happen, staff have to move out and everything like that, well, then we're gonna proceed and.
Yeah, well. I, I don't, I, I don't think it matters, you know, which, which way we go, if, if everybody's happy with, with uh. Asking pension what their recommendation is as far as testing. And, and employee. Uh, involvement, on involvement, employee safety is considered, what is your recommendation? Can you summarize that? Go ahead, Mike.
Can we make that an assumption or recommendation?
We can, no, we can direct staff to. Ball, ball, doc, pension. Ask them about the testing. And make sure that we're not exposing our employees to unnecessary safety issues. If they come back and say, you know, you gotta do something. If they come back and say, you know, you gotta do something, then we have no choice.
Well, tell us what we have.
Again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so just summarizing on the spot, um. On what I'm hearing of the discussion, um. That staff, the matter be referred to staff to get more information from the uh companies, just in terms of next steps and what's required with the. Investigation process.
Investigation process, yeah.
Or the hazardous material testing process. Yeah, cause that's what we're looking at, and if Dave can find out for them, we can be done, and it's no big issue to staff on that.
Edward. I hate to, I don't know, I always give him, and answering, you wanna get told in the morning, so, but we gotta do this right. Uh and if that's taking the time to do one step at a time to figure out where we're going, then that's what we have to do.
Alright.
Yeah, the, you know. One part of the story is that, you know, if there's no asbestos, we may be able to fix it. If there is asbestos.
Or if it's located in different locations too.
Yeah. Well, if it's dollar value, then you have that.
So here you Mr. Mayor, just in terms of matter of process, uh we need a motion from committee here today just to get staff to go back to get more information from the company regarding the hazardous material testing. And reporting that, and said that report back would come back under business arising when we approve the committee of the four minutes. So you'll get a a separate report and update at that time, providing that it's available. Um if not, it'll come at its next available opportunity.
And then get that all. If they can put it, get it answered.
We're operating on this side, first in, first out, so if you guys want something that has.
Do I get a mover and second here then? Move by council booth, second by council arrangement, for this question.
If we have that ready to the motion, just so I can understand whether just not investigating, can they do it? Really, we want them to know.
Well, that's a step of sense.
When we're asking them to do it, it's all for safety, it's all for safety.
But do it. But the throw out of that, but we know that it's there.
Well, hopefully, Dave has an answer by next week first, and if this verbally tell us that pension said it's completely safe, then. You say, go ahead, Dave, arrange for it, whatever's convenient to you and pension and that, could take roots for pension, I don't know. But I agree with you, once they give us the okay, then let's just do it, then then we'll deal with whatever information we find out.
Do you, Mayor Lobo, I think to help answer that question, my understanding is. Now, while the committee of the whole can give staff further direction and ask for further things. But for you to make a decision to commit, I believe you're gonna need to be counsel. That'd be true. Thank you. So I will do my very best to have this information for you in writing for the next council meeting.
Thank you, that's exactly what we're asking for. Can I get a? Can I get a move on for me? We gotta move on second.
Yeah.
Yes. All favor. Motion is carried. When next we have. Oh, we're she'll, we've ordered for instructions. For the whole. Okay, I read the record, their initial recommendation, and that was that. The council, many of the whole the season report, C A O two oh two five nineteen, graph municipal. Office R F Q for information, can I get a move on second to that? By council booth, definitely by Deputy Mayor Stolberg, for the discussion, all favor, not motions carried. Moving on to eleven two. Uh council staff relations, high performance team workshop report. It is recommended, well, yeah, that's all we can do. It is recommended the committee of the whole received the township. Consulting element told them, I perform a steam workshop, report for information and the council established the following goals. Related to high performance team workshop report. Mayor Gartner, you wanna start the conversation?
Sure, let's start with the easy stuff first.
Uh just, just so you know, I have to leave in forty five minutes.
We better be done in forty five minutes. Um I think we've already made some substantive. The discussion at these meetings is much approved, improved to what happened before. Um but the easy one first, I think, let's start with the shared social time and come camaraderie. Um I think as council members, what do we wanna do? The five of us to do something fun, whether or not we decide to include our spouses. But just so that we have a chance to know one another better, know. What's going on in your family? What are you liking to do? Those kinds of things. Anyway, I know we're probably gonna hear about fishing from Mike, but anyway.
Well, I I can, that's a great idea, whether it's spouses or not or not, it's it's nice to be able to meet people and. And I call it chew the fat, but.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And, you know, it can't be business related.
No.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh just to uh just to add to these, you know, you look at the next steps for this thing here. But uh you know, the camaraderie is a good thing, you know, maybe uh we should do a couple of things with with staff and. Um and and council, uh maybe we should add, uh you know, the public works of the department, that type of stuff, you know, maybe have a a day out. Salt day of the nine hole with a barbecue or something, just just enjoy each other, get to know each other a little more. Uh you know. The number three there foster ongoing dialogue between staff and council and should improve it. In the working relationship, that's, that's the big one for me, so all that kind of stuff would do that.
I I think you follow up what we initially started, and that was our goal was to improve council. Staff relations, so anything that we're working on towards that is is gonna be positive. Don't you think?
Oh, absolutely. I was gonna do that as number two, where we did it and then. But maybe that ties in with the day that they're doing the asbestos testing, they all have to go out and play golf, I don't know, it'd be. Be hot up them, but they might be going to do it or fishing or whatever activity we think would be fun.
But let's do something. Not talk about it, let's do something.
Go ahead, what you got?
Um. Because I got to hold some of them. Because library was being included in their activity days, and I know we had the Christmas parties, but. Then they switched to doing the summer parties, and I actually thought they were better, they were um. Getting people from different departments to mingle more than the Christmas parties where people tended to sit with the people they came with, but um. We did some silly games and then there was a food truck there, and I think the event was about two hours, maybe two and a half hours long. But it was all out of the ones that we did that I thought built relationships the best. That one that had sort of the unstructured games that we played together where. Um we did, we were forced to meet people as we tried to walk with the logs attached to our feet. Um. Anyway, and then they gave us great lunch from the food truck, so that would be my suggestion, something that forces. That sounds like a nasty word, but something that encourages people from other departments to mingle together would be a good thing.
Go ahead.
To you, Mayor Lobo, and this would be to our clerk, maybe our C A O, um. Well, if we were talking golfing, is there funds like as a team building exercise? Is there funds available for that? Or I guess that'd be, well, yeah, whoever, let's stay answered.
Here, Mayor, we'd have to, you know, I'd have to talk with her.
Mm hmm. Uh the other, since the, since most of us did take this training, um. It would be, it would be interesting to see if there has. Uh and been an improvement, how how staff are feeling. Um and I I'm not sure if that would put people on uh on edge to to do that, if it was anonymous, I guess it would be alright. I do think that um there still is a a need for uh maybe a bit more honesty around the horseshoe, but. We certainly are moving in a direction that is appropriate for professionals that we are that sit around here, so. That would just be my uh comments.
And I think that's what Rob Davis said, to be honest and truthful and and uh. You'll get along much greater if you do.
Exactly.
So what direction, what, let's do something there, this doesn't just talk about it, so. Dave, you're gonna check and see if there's money available, and that when you had asked everybody to go. Staff and everybody to go with uh something like that, and you're including public works?
At the request of council, I can ask the others.
Anything else? We're got it. Maybe, maybe, maybe we should take up Joyce and said, do, or join and said. Uh do a survey of the people that attended that and and uh get a, get an understanding, uh if it's. Approved it or not, or it's better or it's worse.
With the managers, right, too, that would be, that'd be helpful for me to know uh if there is. Areas that we as professionals sitting around the horseshoe need to improve.
Well, you get asked new questions, have we ever, have we improved and where, what, what's, what sectors are that? And can we improve in other areas?
What areas are lacking?
That makes sense.
Is that something that uh is appropriate? As long as it's anonymous.
Can you go ahead?
So three, Mr. Mayor, I can check in with um Town Hall Consulting, who we've bumped in for end of September as a follow-up session analyst. Just to see what's all involved in that and whether or not a survey is is part of that process for the follow-up um workshop that we have. So I can check in at that point as opposed to making you just a standalone here.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. Good, Greg.
Um you, you're also, I like the idea of the food truck thing, I've seen that before in other places where, I don't know whether you do it in the. In the parking lot or at the arena where you do it for two hours so that staff can cover each other off, cause not everybody can leave town all there. So the first group comes for the first hour and then they go back and cover the other group and you invite fire, I know it's tough for them, cause a lot of work, but you invite everybody, public works, this and that. And they sit down and, you know, they get a free meal from a food truck or something and. I know you said forcing, I I know in the past dealing with the more blue collar guys, my guys when they attended that, they don't like to get into that. They like to come do the whatever, but I think if you do more other type things or something, not make them get up, a lot of them. Don't feel comfortable doing that.
It was, oh, I don't get it.
Yeah, but I mean, I like the idea of having to come out and say, guess what, it's a free lunch, we, it's a staff appreciation, thank you very much, and. You can sit down and council included to sit down and have a burger or whatever it is you wanna do.
You could do a thirty to one thirty, that would get everybody's in.
You're got it. So so Dave's gonna check C A O and wind stuff, then we'll decide what we're gonna do from there.
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Gartner?
Um just in terms of coverage, I know that when we did the Christmas party here and everybody came and. It was staff who had previously worked down there that covered the desk for that period of the. You know, that two-hour window, just to, so everybody was actually in one place at one time.
I think it's all you knew, they brought in uh.
Sean.
Yeah. Carol Hall's brother, and she's gonna work for the country.
Yeah, she did, she came in the summer.
Mm hmm, okay.
But that would be an over, if it was at the arena, it would be very easy for the overlap for the, you know. Just the thought.
Yep. Anybody else got any other things that they wanna do between, actually, we should be doing this between now and September.
Yeah, right.
Before, and it's gonna be tough because people have taken vacations and it's not, I hesitate thing, but go ahead, Mike.
Uh so you, Mayor, it'd be my preference to do it on a Thursday or Sunday, then everybody can come and relax and not have guests rough in and out.
We would get staff from again, on a weekend.
Well, that's just for, you know, like, you know, for instance, we go to the little nine-hole golf course down there at the number two.
Yeah.
You know, we had to go in there and have breakfast before the golf, or we can stay in that with barbecue, you know, after.
Those seem ridiculous, I, that makes sense.
Something like that, you could do that on the weekend. Make a meal and, and you just draw names out of the hat who you go with, right?
That might be, that might not be for everybody, what, what the the lunch is, I would take.
Mm hmm.
And, but yeah, we could, we could arrange that as well, even if you have to pay for your own.
Well, oh, yeah, exactly, and then I have no fun to do.
What do you think?
Yeah, no, just even, you know, we could cover half of it or something, right?
Yeah, well, yeah. That's what I, that's what I.
I think Dave can find us some other.
You're down it?
Uh I mean, weekends are more relaxed, I get where you're going, Mike, but I think attendance wise, if our message is to say we're all one. Let's get everybody there, it will be easier during working hours.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Mm hmm.
Anybody else have any other comments? So. Are we establishing goals today?
Yeah, so our goal is to do this event, and this is our idea, so that's number one, we've got one goal done.
Okay. Or somebody else said something, oh, yeah, we're gonna see if we uh, well, Emily's gonna check on that.
Uh yeah, and I think that makes a lot of sense. I I still think that we should define the house on council. Um do something specific to the five of us on council. I mean, if we bring spouses, we get better stories told about one another, but.
Yeah.
Well, we can go to the golf course.
Yeah, it couldn't just be us.
Oh.
Yeah.
John, of course.
And the new one.
Yeah.
I think it is, this is a shut that out and something.
Yeah, the other one right there in mine.
Is it, is for the meals and everything?
Yeah.
Was he opening up already?
He's got a chef in there, his little kitchen and.
It's a town murder.
Your type of.
This is. So, um, yeah, we can, let's, let's see if we can do that. Who's gonna organize that?
Mike, I can organize it, um. Just give me some data.
Send us a, send us a thing.
In the near future, like in the next couple of weeks, three years, or when, when?
Yep.
Yeah, we should do it before walls.
Yep. I'm waiting, a couple of weeks in July, or a week in July, but I'll send you those. Actually, July is probably the best.
Alright.
Everybody else can send, like some Thanksgiving or Sunday or better, July. Hmm?
Even though it's for the week.
For the week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because lots. We are Tuesday that we don't have council, can you go there instead?
Yeah.
So are we getting to what you're asking?
So you've got. So three, Mr. Mayor, I have two um two goals right now, which is to plan an all-staff council team building event. Second one being to plan an all-council team building event, and third one remains to be determined.
Okay, you got it?
Um I think we need to do the hard one, which is there have been a lot of people hurt. And what can we do to reduce the hurt that has been caused, or to at least acknowledge openly the hurt that's been caused. And that's to us within the people sitting here, but it's also within our community.
And. To you, Mayor Lobo, I don't know where you would start with something like that. Uh and as well with uh. Do you look at ownership or how far out do you go? I I don't know, is that's um. That's very broad, and I don't know where you would start with something like that. That's just mine. I I would just, um, for me, I I looked at uh. Um keeping a level of honesty, that would be one of my goals. Now, I'm not sure if that's what you're looking for there, but I mean, it's, that is paramount in being in the horseshoe is being honest. So I'm, I'm not sure if you're. So I'm, I'm not sure if you're looking for that or if you're looking more social.
Well, I think it's gotta be a little more than social.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, uh, respect, respect is, is probably. One of the big things that we, uh. Would be important to me and trust.
I think, um, I'll move back to what Mayor Gaffin was saying, I think that's one of the things that Rob Davis suggested that. That we do some of that type of stuff and, and, uh. And, uh, start off by saying, this is my weakness. They're gonna go around and say, this is my weakness, da, 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 and that gets opened up. The only thing is, I'm not sure if we're ready to do that yet.
I wouldn't.
You're down.
Uh, uh, that was very profound, actually, John, I think that was a good point and, and something, um, perhaps. Emily, when you're talking to Town Hall, to ask that question about. Because I think by September, we may be. And he may be the person to lead us through that type of thing, but to your, um, point, Joan. We saw that this morning, our C A O started a conversation over here about Crafton Town Hall and he. Began that conversation. Acknowledging that. This was coming from a place of respect and I think we need to be more specific about doing that kind of thing than what we have been in the past. Um. But, yeah, we can do those things, but there are some huge. Hurt that has happened between people in this room, but hurt that has happened within the community. Um, I, another example of when it. Happened today was when Mike said, wait a minute, it would have been good if we had gone and got advice from our committee. On this as our starting point, those are the kinds of things when we start to say those things and then turn them into action that are going to change. Uh, where things are, but, um, there have been some things that have happened that. Pretending and saying, oh, we're just gonna go along as if they didn't happen, um. I think is in a way being dishonest.
We got a pretty good.
Uh, no, but I mean, just following up. That, statements like that, um. With. Uh, with situations, there has to be ownership. And, uh, we personally, I'm not, I'm not positioned to dwell into that. If there is ways, I think we're all looking to move forward. And not dwell into the past. Um. And one of the big things moving forward, as I said, was honesty and respect, so. With, uh, the camaraderie of doing the team building. Maybe that will start, uh, with this horseshoe. And which will be big and, uh, I'm. I don't have, um. The ability to. Go into, go into it too deep. But just try and move forward. And that's what, uh. That's what I would, I would be thinking, so number three, I guess we would be to move forward with honesty and trust and respect.
And make it a goal for every one of us when we're sitting in the horseshoe.
Exact, exactly.
How's everybody else feel about that? There's a real big. Mike?
To you, Mayor, looking at the overlapping themes. Uh, they see what everybody's talking about, communication, trust, respect, honesty and empathy. Um, I'm sure there's, um, some speakers out there that could come and. Put that whole thing in a package, little training session, Bob.
That's wrong, Dave.
Rob Adams.
That's wrong, yeah.
Well, I, I, I. Okay. But it's like, like an inspirational speaker, right?
Yeah, we can do that ourselves, just changing the way we act. I believe.
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
So. Well, she's getting it.
She's a lot, sorry.
Well, thank you, everybody, for getting moving along so quickly because I do have to leave now.
And. Where do we go?
You want to maybe? Please.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, we don't have a mover and a secuntors, council has been massaging, they're just like gone. Um, but you've got that the committee of the whole receives the Town Hall, Town Hall Consulting, only called them in high performance teams workshop report for information. And that council established the following goals related to the high performance teams workshop report. One, plan an all-staff council team building event, two, plan an all-council team building event, three, move forward with honesty, integrity, trust and respect.
Two. Oh, hey, you move in a second for that? Move by Mike. Seconded by Council O'Neil. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Uh, motion to adjourn, at the committee of the whole reading held on June seventeenth, two thousand and forty-five, we adjourned at. One oh six P M, move in a second. Moved by Deputy Mayor Stover, seconded by Council O'Neil. All in favor? That motion is carried.